Hello? 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 Alright, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. And the webcam is good?
Alright, so this is me talking at a normal voice. This is mic one. This is me on mic two while I'm wearing my mask. This is me on mic three, also wearing my mask. This is mic four at chest level. This is mic five at chest level as well. This is mic six at chest level. Finally, this is mic seven. How's that sound, Alberto?
Um, microphones three, four, five and six were pretty quiet. They got progressively quieter. Seven and, one, two and seven are good.
Let me see why that is, one second.
Yeah.
Is microphone three was low?
Yeah, it was. It's sounding better now.
I raised the volume on all of it. Do you hear a lot of feedback on your end?
Uh, no.
This is mic four at chest level. Is that better?
Uh, mic four is better, but it's still a little quiet.
I mean, it's supposed to be like up to the neck. How about now?
Uh, it's more or less the same, but it's passable.
It's all quiet. He speaks pretty loud.
Yeah, he'll be good.
This is mic five. How does this sound?
Uh, mic five is still really quiet.
This is mic six. How does that sound?
Also really quiet.
This is mic six. How does that sound?
Still quiet.
This is mic four. How's it sound?
Uh, it's a lot louder and blown out.
Blown out?
Yeah.
How about mic five? Is it blown out too?
Uh, no, it's still dead quiet.
I mean, I raised it up a lot. How about mic six?
Still quiet. Those are the, uh, those are your two lapels, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, fuck, because they're both charged.
This is mic three. How's that sound? Three is fine, right?
Yeah, three is fine.
Yeah, I don't know why the lapels are being low. I'm adjusting the, I'm making adjustments. Let me try again. How's this for mic five?
Um, it's still quiet. I feel like it's not picking up that, uh, picking up from that mic. It might just be, um, the ambient noise that the rest of them are picking up.
Yeah, this makes like six.
Mic six is still quiet.
I'll reconnect them. This is mic, uh, five. How's it sound?
Still quiet.
This is mic, uh, five. How's it sound?
Still quiet.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Still really low?
Uh, now it's good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, no.
How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now? Because I'm moving it from my mouth to my chest.
Um, it's a little quiet again.
How about now?
Quiet.
How about now?
Still quiet.
Super quiet?
Yeah, it just feels like, uh, the rest of the mics are picking up your voice.
These things are picking up super loud. How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now?
It's still really quiet.
That's being really weird. How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now? Because I'm moving it from my mouth to my chest.
Um, it's a little quiet again.
How about now?
Quiet.
How about now?
Still quiet.
Super quiet?
Yeah, it just feels like, uh, the rest of the mics are picking up your voice.
These things are picking up super loud.
Hmm.
How about now?
There we go.
Does that sound better?
Yeah, it does.
How's it sound?
Um, it's quieter, but it's not, you can't, or you can still hear it.
You know what I did? I just moved the receiver. I had it put onto the metal. I wonder if they're getting interference. This is mic four.
Ooh.
Do you know which one the wireless one is for you?
Um, on the mixer?
How about now?
Uh, you can hear it, but it's blown out.
It's too low?
No, it, it's loud, but it's just blown out.
How about now?
Um, it's a little quiet, but you can still hear it, but it sounds fine.
How about there? Does that sound normal?
Uh, no, it just sounds quiet.
How about now?
Alright, we're getting louder, but it's starting to sound blown out.
How's that?
Um, just, it still sounds quiet.
Now?
It just sounds.
How about now?
Alright, we're getting louder, but it's starting to sound blown out.
How's that?
Um, it's still quiet. I feel like it's not picking up that, uh, picking up from that mic. It might just be, um, the ambient noise that the rest of them are picking up.
Yeah, this makes like six.
Mic six is still quiet.
I'll reconnect them. This is mic, uh, five. How's it sound?
Still quiet.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Still really low?
Uh, now it's good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, no.
How about now?
It's still really quiet.
That's being really weird. How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now?
It's sounding better.
That's being really weird. How about now?
It's sounding better.
How about now? Because I'm moving it from my mouth to my chest.
Um, it's a little quiet again.
How about now?
Quiet.
How about now?
Still quiet.
Super quiet?
Yeah, it, it just feels like, uh, the rest of the mics are picking up your voice.
These things are picking up super loud.
Hmm.
How about now?
There we go.
Does that sound better?
Yeah, it does.
How's it sound?
Um, it's quieter, but it's not, you can't, or you can still hear it.
You know what I did? I just moved the receiver. I had it put onto the metal. I wonder if they're getting interference. This is mic four.
Ooh.
Do you know which one the wireless one is for you?
Um, on the mixer?
How about now?
There we go.
Does that sound better?
Yeah, it does.
How's it sound?
Um, it's quieter, but it's not, you can't, or you can still hear it.
You know what I did? I just moved the receiver. I had it put onto the metal. I wonder if they're getting interference. This is mic four.
Ooh.
Do you know which one the wireless one is for you?
Um, on the mixer?
How about now, Alberto?
Uh, you can hear it, but it's blown out.
It's too low?
No, it, it's loud, but it's just blown out.
How about now?
Um, it's a little quiet, but you can still hear it, but it sounds fine.
How about there? Does that sound normal?
Uh, no, it just sounds quiet.
How about now?
It's still quiet.
How about now?
Getting better.
How about now?
Alright, we're getting louder, but it's starting to sound blown out.
How's that?
Um, just, it still sounds quiet.
Now?
It just sounds.
How about now?
Alright, we're getting louder, but it's starting to sound blown out.
How's that?
Um, just, it still sounds quiet.
Now?
It just sounds.
How about now?
Alright, we're getting louder, but it's starting to sound blown out.
How's that?
Um, just, it still sounds quiet.
Now?
It just sounds.
You know, I do a lot of math. No, you don't. No, you don't. I, uh... They give you a star creature, a new creature, whatever, but I think that means you. And then, oh, man, it's a lot of people. Because, you know, when I ask anyone over there, mostly the people that I know, never. Oh, and I've seen some really unique ones at different places. I used to go there a lot. But I finally, I don't think I have her. I can't say I don't have a brain problem because I can grow, I can take that. But every time I try to get her...
I mean, it's fine.
I still just want her to look at me and I fall. It's. I know what you're saying. It's just my frustration. My, um, is my trees and my beds and everything. I can't put that shit on this. I don't know.
That's because I'm not speaking.
Yeah. I have tomatoes come up every year out of the crack. And walking potatoes. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? No, it's just fun. Yeah? This is a test. We used to get on my dad. He liked to hurt me. Tony, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
When I was a young adult.
We're just testing the audio still.
Do I need to have mine on mute or something? Sorry, say that again. Do I need to mute mine? He was a teacher during the year, but then during the summer he would dispatch for Pinella trucking. And right back when the crop started coming in, it'd start working nights. And then me and mom had to put up all the food, har- harvest, all the food. Hello, sir? Hello?
Hello.
Hello. Okay. Well, that's what I said. Do what's the easiest for you. I'd like to bring a movie.
Hello, this is a test. Hello, this is a test. You have to wait a second.
Okay.
Hello, this is a test. I have a question for you.
I don't even have to. Do I have to echo?
Yeah, there's still a little bit of echo because everyone's talking.
Okay. I think we got it now.
Alright.
Yes, council member, we're, we're, we got a question. Why is there tape on the window with the, or whatever that thing is? The top hook? Oh, because of the window where I grew up. First I thought it was tape left over from cooking balloons or something to a graduation parade. And then the more I looked at it, the more I... Yeah, it fell on, sitting on Friday, so I ordered it because I wanted it for Thursday. That's fun. We had that happen to us one time in Las Vegas. And we had to drive all the way home in the middle of the summer with the window down. Mm-hmm. Mm-mm. And I have extra passes. I have, well, I have the... Hmm. Love me, you just add this with the screen. Oh, my. Did I have the wrong one? I was just looking. This is a beautiful, this is a beautiful. What? Oh, yeah. Last week it was over six hundred thousand in red and yellow signs. And it went to four hundred and twenty people. And then, yes, we're done. We're done. Would you hear the drive-by graduation party? I, I actually, I heard the, I thought it sounded like a gun. I knew it was a fire. No, this was another one. Yeah, we had two parties the other night. It was, it was a birthday party across the street from me. And then my neighbors on the other side, their daughter graduated from middle school. And there was a, they had a drive-by party. A long line of cars, and everyone stopped and handed her a balloon as they came by. And all, to mark the night. Cute. Misty? Can you hear me? Hi. We see you. You're on the large screen. You? Se comunico con él? Ya. Y qué les, qué le desopina esto? Qué le desopina yo? Mire, a cada vez, como dice aquí, que uno exagera de, eh, de aprobar, creo, aprobar esto y otro.
Do I need to mute mine?
He was a teacher during the year, but then during the summer, he would dispatch for Pinello trucking. And right back when the crop started coming in, it'd start working nights. And then me and mom had to put up all the food, har- harvest, all the food. Hello, sir? These are the council packets.
Hello. Hello.
Okay. Well, that's what I said, do what's easiest for you. I'm gonna bring them in.
Hello, this is a test. Hello, this is a test. That's high enough. You have to wait a second.
Okay.
Hello, this is a test.
I don't even have to ask.
Do I have to echo?
Yeah, there's still a little bit of echo because everyone's talking. Okay. I think we got it now. All right.
And stop things.
Yes, sir.
Yes, council member, we're, we're, we've got a question.
Why is there tape on the window with the... Or whatever that thing is.
Tahoe?
The Tahoe?
Oh, because the window, I go to the...
First I thought it was tape left over from cooking balloons or something to the graduation parade. And then, the more I looked at it, I thought, hmm.
Yeah, it fell on, sitting on Friday, so I ordered it, I won't make it first.
That's fun. We had that happen to us one time in Las Vegas. And we had to drive all the way home in the middle of the summer with the window down. Mm-hmm. Oh, my. Did I have the knob on? This is a beautiful, this is a beautiful... What? Oh, yeah. Last week, it were over six hundred thousand in the red and the blue. And it went to four hundred and twenty two. And then, yes, we're done, we're done, we're done. Did you hear the drive-by graduation party?
I, I actually, oh, I heard the, I thought, is that like a gun? I knew it was a fire.
No, this was another one. Yeah, we had two parties the other night. There was, there was a birthday party across the street from me. And then my neighbors on the other side, their daughter graduated from middle school. And there was a, they had a drive-by party, long line of cars. And everyone stopped and handed her a balloon as they came by. And all, the heart, the heart. Cute. Rusty? Can you hear me? Hi.
Hi.
We see you. You're on the large screen.
¿Cómo se comunica con ellos? ¿Y qué, qué les, qué le desopina esto?
¿Qué le desopina?
¿Qué, qué le opino yo? Mire, a cada vez, como dice aquí, que uno exagera de, de aprobar, creo, aprobar esto y otro. Yo una de las cosas que tengo es el presupuesto de la ciudad. Y eso lo miro, cuando estábamos trabajando, lo de, los préstamos a las, a los negocios, por, por, por presupuesto.
¿El presupuesto de lo que estamos haciendo es? No, es que estamos más en cuenta, por su voluntad, lo que, que lo que estamos nosotros. Me está quedando lo que indicamos.
Es simple, pero tiene uno así como dice, como, por ejemplo, qué es presupuesto.
Si yo mira, mira, no, 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 no.
Good afternoon. Evening.
Evening.
There it is. There's one in the ice chest. I was gonna get one of those too. That's dry.
Sí, sí, bueno, no, yo, yo no sé.
How do you drink with a mask?
Pero, pero, sí, mire, digamos que son los mismos. En las casas, y ahora sí, siempre caen todos.
Ah, racing.
Todos los presupuestos están, se han manuscreado. El progreso está, eh, como, como, déjenme ver. Progreso, como... Y había previamente semana.
Oh, no!
Se ha iniciado, este... Ha sido por causa de los colinias, pero más que nada, en colinia general. De que, como hoy sigue pasando, la hora de, este, si días, ah, si sabías. Pero cuando le cayó, le cayeron porque... Se decidieron en que, que no, aquí, en el bueno de la manera, que, que... Mi intención es que las corporaciones...
Yes, to do something, yeah, thing.
Mire, eh, este, había, no es por, por, por... Algo de tiempo, así hasta todo de, de, del programa está junto a la cinco. Contratamos con varios, este, motores, tres.
She left that tree on Samakine Street. There's not much left of that tree on Samakine Street.
We're still struggling with connection.
Who else is trying to?
Fernando, Rob, Fernando, Rob Scott.
Yep, here.
Hi there.
There's Fernando.
Hi. Hi, I'm here too.
Ronald, Ronald Bromley on?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hi, Rob.
Hello.
The only one that they know of is Scott.
There's a phone number, I don't know who sent that.
I know, twenty, I agree, twenty. Do we want to go ahead and get started? We've had most of our department.
Scott, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, let me turn the volume back up because I...
Yeah, we hear you, we got it, we're good.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you mu...
So, Sean? All right, then, we'll get started, cool. So we'll be starting with our workshop today. And comments from city manager.
I wanted to keep it a bit short. This budget, it has been a real struggle this year. We, general fund was actually in the red last week of over six hundred thousand, then it went to four hundred thousand. We're just looking to see where, you know, where are things at, how are things are going. And it's in my head, I'm going, I need to explain what has happened since 2011. And it'll maybe help all of you to understand why there are more funds in general fund. At least provide you information to make a determination. But I want to thank Dawn and all the department heads through everything that's gone on over the past few months. And that they were focused, they did provide their budgets in a timely manner in May. And I commend all of them, they did a great job. You're going to see some of the budgets where the line item either have stayed the same or decreased. Your water and sewer funds, there's really no difference. Very, and if there is, it's very little. Uh, what you will see is in, I haven't talked to Ronald yet, uh, is in PEGENium Power. Because hopefully the, the solar project could be online. But just overall, the, the general fund, and it does affect the other funds as well. In 2011, well, actually, let's roll back. When the landfill was opened in 2002 and then expanded in 2006, there were about two and a half years that we were, uh, in host fees, we were receiving a million dollars or more. That has taken a big hit. We, uh, lost about seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue, it's gone up somewhat. That's a big hit when you're looking at our budget and our general funds. Because it goes into a pot of money, not just for salaries, it's for operations, it's, it's overall. We lost 1.3 million dollars in redevelopment. We have never recovered from that. We will, but we haven't to date. That happened in 2011, excuse me, 2012. And our property tax, when Chevron Oil took over for JP Oil, they took the lease back. And they actually pumped a lot of money into the oil fields. They actually built a little substitution, you know, you can take on the way out. And they had the oil fields reassessed. And they, um, at least had another million dollars that we were receiving, or we did, in property tax money for a few years. And when they decided to basically sell that, uh, the oil fields to CRC, excuse me, um, we lost that because the oil fields were reassessed again by CRC. That was about a million dollars. So if you look at the, the total amount over nine years, we have lost almost three million dollars in general fund revenue. And that is a big hit. And for us to continue operations, uh, we run very, very tight budgets as we have general fund. So anyway, I'm, I'm looking at going, where, you know, where is the money? And it's, I need to explain this, that we have not recuperated from those losses yet. We need sales tax revenue, we need property tax, we need building in town. But when you talk about building, you have to weigh and balance your water needs, your sewer capacity. So it's not just, let's go ahead and do this. There are definitely going to be expenses along the way. But, and of course, job creation is, is a big deal. And that hopefully the people that work and, and live in town, then will put money back into the economy, go to the stores, you know, go to the pharmacy and, and whatnot, uh, to help pump some funds back in, into the community through sales tax. So keeping that in mind, uh, and me with my light coming on going, you know, I don't know that I've ever explained this because it looks like while we have nothing, we're struggling. But I think we're doing a very good job and using the funds in a very good way to meet the needs, to keep the services going. Basically, we have probably the same amount of staff, maybe two extra. Within our classic employees, our employees that had been employed since, you know, the nineteen eighties. Uh, it was our law enforcement that we added, that's where we increased our employees. So we've been, our employees, other than law enforcement, have not increased that much. We did add, uh, the theater, events coordinator. I believe, uh, we did add the landscaping, but we were contracting out for landscaping. So that basically was washed. So there really hasn't been a lot of growth, uh, within, uh, the city itself as far as employee scope. So, and that to me is a great testament on the abilities of the people that we do, that we have hired, and for the years that they have stayed here. So that being said, uh, what we're looking at, as I say every year, it's an operations budget. There isn't a lot of money in general fund, and that is the main fund that basically keeps services going. Understanding that water is its own generator, wastewater is its own generator, steam and refuse and recycling. So, and keeping that in mind, uh, the general fund, it's struggling, but we, we should be okay as long as we all work together. We don't take any large hits, we don't know. It looks like the economy is starting to roll a little bit. And hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll see, uh, even, you know, or have better news. Anyway, I wanted to share that with you about a little bit of historic information that has affected us. And that, um, we just keep working and, um, keep our economic development going, keeping Tony busy and keeping Fernando busy as well. So anyway, thank you, I just wanted to share that with you. I, I have to say, I'm very proud of what this council and staff have been able to accomplish with what little that we have. And anyway, anybody have any questions about anything right now? Before you get to the numbers?
Questions?
Okay.
All right. So we move on to, uh, number two, review of department budgets, general fund, fund ten.
And just for your, and this goes in the budget, it's included in budget each year. And it is the departments and personnel, so you know who we're talking about, what department they work in and what the titles are. So that's actually on page three. Thank you, Dawn, for making sure the pages were numbered, you said that. And it is double sided. It also includes our officers on the opposite page. On page five, uh, it is our draft budget summary of all funds that we have. You'll see that, uh, our revenues do achieve our expenditures somewhat. Understanding that this includes all the funds, but you can't commingle funds, you can't, you know, we have to keep that in mind. We can't take from here to here, uh, to make things work. There are three allocations that, uh, we can do auditor's support, as long as we support it, that we should be okay. But we couldn't take money from the operation authority and run the building department, that is not allowed. So this is an example. All of the departments are in the black, it was a struggle. The, um, there may be some funds, as you see in the, the financial report, you'll see where there are amounts in the red. That means that we have made a payment, we're usually waiting for a reimbursement from the state or whatever. And those projects and grants, it just depends on how they're expended. Okay, and most of them, almost all of them are on reimbursement basis. So that's why we provide all the numbers, so council have a really good idea of where we are as far as our general fund revenues and, uh, our expenditures. And that again is our finance, our monthly financials. But this is our budget summary. Then we get to the page that I like so much. Out of all the different graphs that are available, I like the pie chart. But we can certainly provide any type of graph that Dawn has available to her. If, uh, you'd like to see something done differently, that would be absolutely fine. But it shows you basically where, where are the funds going? And what is their percentage as part of the overall budget? Let's get rid of one, are we okay? The next page, this is page seven, actually has our, is our budget comparison as to what we're, what we budgeted last year as to where we are this year. Which is, you know, good for us to be able to see that visually, to see where we're going and what grants is with these in this year. And what we have to ask?
Go ahead. The budget comparison?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Are all the negatives supposed to be red?
Did I miss one?
Yeah, CDBG.
Ah dang.
Sorry.
I missed one.
I was wondering if there was just a reason, because some of these I know are, just go away, because they've all been spit out, like the grants.
Right. Like the PetSmart and the Tree Grants, and they will eventually, they can be deleted.
Yeah.
But this is actually a really good resource page for everyone. On page nine, I'm going by order here. On page nine, it's actually the budget summary specifically for the general fund. And that's where we're going to start as far as our review goes this evening. But again, this is a, a summary page and it's a very good resource as we go through the budget. And on page 10, if you'll turn this over, this one, I appreciate the one for the overall budget, but page 10 would be for general fund, because that has been concerning fund for several years. And the first place we go is where is that large number? That large number is the police department. And at 54%, they are well within a good range. When we get up to 60, 65, 70 is, when, when you have a police department or any type of public safety that basically is so high that is taking away from the other services, then I would say there would be a concern. But I, our police department, I think they've done a very good job, Rusty, our chief, has done a great job, he is, everyone is conscientious, Rusty is very, if there is a problem with the budget, he'll let us know if he has, you know, one expense that is, or expenditure that isn't his, he will let us know. And so they, I know they, he and his staff actually meet regularly and go over the budget, so we appreciate that about him. But this gives you an idea of the overall general fund, what it looks like and, and where the funds are. I would like to skip over the revenue, that would be in budget workshop numbers two, since we have staff actually available by noon, I would like to let's see, review. And I would like to begin with the city clerk, who is fund 10, general fund is your fund 10, and the department is 3,000. I'll get back to the councils and city managers and the attorneys, but if we can, I'd appreciate if we could continue on to the city clerk.
And page 23.
Is she up? Is she stuck here? Okay.
She was here and then she was gone.
That's it, you know. If you look, yes, on page 23, the city clerk, Angie is not only the city clerk, she's an administrative assistant, she wears a lot of hats, she helps with the building department, she helps in planning if that's ever needed, she certainly helps me in my office, and she's a resource for the city council. The employee expenses, purse contribution, any of benefits, all of those numbers come from Dawn. So if you take that away, and if you start at office supplies, which is 601, all the way to 673, that's the operational expense. So the professional services, that's for quantification of the ordinance, I'm not certain that 10,000 will actually take care of that, that's also for the general election, will be paid out of that. Building postage, that's understandable with what she does. Conference training, that would be for Angie, she, she's been to a shoe training, but, and she belongs to an association, but she is basically, she's at City Hall. Legal publications, that's, that's basically non-negotiable, there are things that have to be posted by law, and that's what we depend on her for. There's memberships for city clerks and any of the miscellaneous that's needed, those $350, so really her operational budget is very well for itself. Are there any questions about the city clerk budget? Was it 3,000? If not, if we can continue on to, it's general fund 10 again, and it would be administrative services director Dawn, if we can review, Department 5,000 and 6,000. Page?
26, 27.
5,000 is? Page 27.
I understand saving paper and trees?
It's a joke, double sided.
Go ahead, Dawn, sorry.
Okay. The finance department budget is mainly, most of it is dispersed out to the other funds, but of the things that are already not just allocated out already, what comes into this account or this budget unit is the auditing services for general fund, all payroll services. We have professional services, our safety budget, our safety program that we have monthly, and that includes Christmas and Thanksgiving and different programs that we have. But the main meat of this budget unit is the insurance with RMA, that's our general services liability, our employees assistance program, the workers' comp is 100% billed to this budget unit, business travel, the crime shield program, and the unemployment benefits. And then on a quarterly basis, I go in and allocate a portion of this budget to the water fund, the sewer fund, recycling. So that's their portion of the things that are not allocated on a regular basis.
And they'll be able to see that as we go through the budget?
Yes. Uh-huh. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you not think the cost of, maybe you do it to the water and the sewer fund, is the allocation that the, you know, rent is, or for them?
Right, such as our payroll services. We contract with Paylocity, we enter our time on electronic time sheets, and then bi-weekly we pay payroll, and then once a month, they charge us a fee for that month's service. And it gets allocated on quarterly basis rather than splitting it out each payroll.
However, if I really want to know the position, she will, so I can really get a, a good picture of what's going on, I'll ask Dawn, have you done the transfers, can we get those done? And she'll take care of them. But it, it needs to be within that quarter, you can't just do it every month, but that gives at least me a, a better idea of where we are.
And it actually would be a one-time, basically a one-time setup to be able to do that on a monthly basis, or a bi-weekly base, well, monthly.
A one-time fee?
Yes.
Oh boy.
Okay.
Quarterly is just fine.
Just my time and, you know, the hair standing on the end.
And the insurance question, what does that insurance cover? What, what's, what would be used as a, what does it cover?
The general liability is for, basically for any, well, it encompasses everything that the city does, basically, you know, just like your general liability that you have for your business, it's the same thing. We do have, there are several programs that fall under our insurance, we have general liability, we have workers' comp, we have the crime shield, and these are all with RMA, our joint powers agreement. The vehicle and the property are both, fall under our maintenance, equipment and maintenance budget unit, and you'll see that when we get to that point.
Any other questions? You're gonna do 6,000?
I do 6,000. 6,000 is on page 29. And that's most of our general expenses, it includes, you know, our office supplies, printed forms such as our billings, envelopes, computer supplies, building repairs for City Hall, the computer lease and enhancements, billing postage, and the gas and electricity for City Hall, along with our copiers, other miscellaneous, the water bills that are City Hall's portions, and a portion of this does get allocated, it also gets allocated out to the water fund and the sewer fund and recycling. And that is because of my staff, I have the utilities, and they do all the billing for water and sewer, so it's, everything is expended in my budget unit, and then their portion of it is allocated out.
And just so all of you will know, is that all water must be metered in the city, and the city must pay a water bill as well, nothing, no water is free. It must be metered. Just one, you know, that's why you're going to see water in utilities, just about every department, or many of the departments.
Yes, we still have to pay our own water to ourselves. And you'll, you'll actually see that on the check register when you get it each month in the packet, it will say internal, or City of Avonale, that's the water.
And I would agree with you, I know that it's $85,000, what is that?
Most of that is our accounting system, and it's about $4,500 to $5,000 a month.
We have invested since the 1990s in the program, and we've had to go through the upgrades, and we'll, we're going to be looking at another one here in the not-too-distant future.
Very, very shortly.
So it isn't just hardware?
I'm sorry?
It's not just hardware?
No, it is not just hardware, it's mostly the software.
Applications.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay. Will we move on to see Fernando? Fund 10, 7,000.
Fernando, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, good evening.
It's your turn.
All right, well, is there an echo there?
There is.
Okay, let me, let me try this again. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, good evening, mayor, members of the council, Melissa, Dawn. So going over my budget here on page, what is it, 31, obviously like every other department, we cut pretty much every line item, the only exception being construction. Over the last few years, we've had quite a bit of activity in the construction department where we've made expenditures out of, out of our budget for projects that we have ongoing. And as you know, the, the community center is, is still, that construction is still ongoing, so I wanted to be able to have a little bit there in case we needed to, to utilize some, a small amount of general fund money to, you know, address any issues that come up. Obviously, most of the project is being paid for with grant funding, and, and we're waiting to hear back from the state for additional funds to continue that project. So all the other items, I just wanted to point that out for construction, but starting from the top, you know, we've, I think from 601 down is what I was asked to look at, because I think Dawn automatically fills in the first five line items. We have office supplies, we cut that in, basically in half, based on our, our expenditures this year. We, for engineering services, that's typically what is billed to our department for some of Brian's time, for example, the water line project or other planning review items. Let me just mention that the water line project is grant funded, those expenditures though come out of my account until we get reimbursed by the state for those, for those expenditures. But Brian also reviews track maps, parcel maps, CUP, site plans, all kinds of different things that, that we send over to him. So I like to have the engineering services line item pretty well funded, as you can see, we've, we've spent about 116,000 this year, and that was related to the community center, but most of that is going to be reimbursed. So computer, computer lease enhancements, that normally just pays for our software, between Tony and myself, we use Adobe, which includes Adobe Acrobat and Photoshop and those kinds of items. And then also the, the big one being GIS, so our geographic information system that we use pretty extensively and is a really good resource for us, in helping us complete our, our planning duties. Professional services, that also was reduced drastically, just because, you know, we have a lot on our plate right now, that's normally the fund that I'll use, or excuse me, the line item that I'll use to pay for assistance with any planning functions or grant writing assistance, if we need to submit a proposal, for example, that requires traffic engineering, like we did with the active transportation program, we paid out of it, we paid for it through professional services, things like that. So we don't anticipate, we've got, you know, three or four grants that we're going to be implementing over the, this next fiscal year, so I don't anticipate we're going to be needing a lot of extra professional services, but I still wanted to have a But I still wanted to have a relatively comfortable amount in there, even though it's much less, about $50,000 less than last budget year. Yeah, everything else I think is pretty self-explanatory. Our, our conference and train, conference and training, we reduced that. We didn't use most of our budget this year because none of the planning commissioners were able to attend the Planning Commissioners Academy, as is the case every year. We usually try to send two commissioners to that academy as well as one staff member. And that's why there's that big discrepancy between what we actually used and what was actually budgeted. But I think, you know, we cut it more than half and I think we're, we're going to be able to get by if we're only able to send one planning commissioner or two commissioners and no staff, you know, we'll see how that works out. But, you know, the other items, memberships, we have memberships to CalEd and the American Planning Association, different, different associations that we use as resources. IEDC as well, which is the International Economic Development Council. And yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it. Are there any questions?
Any questions? All right. You're good. See you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Fernando.
All right, so we move on to item B, which is Rob Williams. Fund 7,200.
All right, we have.
Several, yes, several.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Scott's on the line, too. Yeah, 72, which is our budget for inspections and stuff. We try to keep enough in there to be able to cover our professional services, which is Will Dan, which is our contract inspector. Scott tries to take care of what he can. But we got a big construction project going as far as a track. He tends to let Will Dan handle it because it's so much stuff out there that he can, he can move on and take care of the crew. So we hire Will Dan to handle most of the inspections. So we ended up, you can actually see what we spent last year was only 20,000, but with the, the up-and-coming construction on the books right now, we're going to need Will Dan a lot more. So that's why we budgeted a little more. Code enforcement, as you see, we pick up on 517, uniforms, office supplies, printing forms, other maintenance supplies, professional service, telephone, billing, conferences and membership and subscriptions. As you probably know by now, we, we lost one of our code enforcement officers. So budgets, looks like it's, it's a little smaller because we only have one officer now. So that's what we're going to end up going through our budget year with one code enforcement officer. And me and Scott will fill in as we, as we need it.
Rob, hello?
Rob?
You're on that 7,300 right now?
I was 72.
Well, you were on 72, but then.
Then I passed on to 73.
Right, he went from building.
Page 35.
Yeah. Oh, you guys are, oh, I got all my stuff lined up. I'm sorry.
I guess, were there any questions on 7,200?
Yeah, that's, that's a little.
Any questions? 7,200?
I had one. It's probably amazing. But the build, last line on 7,200, building construction and debris, I'm thinking. You doubled that from last year. And when I see a jump, I just want to know why.
Well, we, we have to have something in there through the recycling program that offsets the landfill. So we have to, right now, we have to charge contractors to haul their waste to a, a recycling place. So we have to have something in there to, to pay them back as they take their stuff to a recycling plant.
So you're expecting more of that for next year?
Yes. With the, with the construction, with the new houses. Panda Koala's building more houses and then with the housing tract on Kern and, and Corkin Street. So we anticipate a little more construction. So we need some, needed a little extra in there to get them, get them started. They, they pay upfront and then they get reimbursed. So I just want to have something in there to get started with the paperwork.
Okay, so we're not paying for them. This is just upfront money and they're paying it back?
Yes, yes.
That's like a revolving account. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Back to 73.
Okay. No, Rob, let's move on to 70.
Move on to 73?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we start at 517, like I said, uniforms, office supplies, printed forms, other maintenance supplies. We started out with 2,500, but we're down to 1,000 just to, just to bring it in. We, we didn't use it, so we just cut it out completely. Telephone, professional services. We like to keep some in there because the professional service on that part is when we do our abatements and tearing down houses. So we have to have some money in there to cover the cost of our asbestos training or asbestos. Yeah, removal and inspections. So. Let's see where. So the rest of it is just conference and everything. They have to keep up their, their license and everything, so we have to have some training in there. We can't let our, our license lapse, otherwise they have to start all over. So you have to have so much continued education to keep your, keep your training up. So that's what we try to keep in there for them to keep their search going. And that kind of concludes 7,200. Is there any questions about that?
Any questions? 7,300?
If, if I may, Rob, please. Rob, can I just make a?
Can you?
Yes, Rob, can you hear me? It's no.
Yes.
Okay, may I make just a statement before you begin, please?
Yes.
I know Rob went over it. We do have a code enforcement officer that retired and because of the budget, we are not looking at filling that position this next year, at least not now. So I just want to make that clear, Rob. Thank you.
Okay, okay. All right. We got 8,100, parks and landscape. Starts again at 517, uniforms. We left our chemical budget.
You jumped us. We are on page 41.
Page 41.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. See, I don't have, I don't have the book. I don't have a book. I just have my, my budget lined. Sorry about that.
Send it to you. It's okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm bringing it up right now, so I.
Go ahead, Rob. We're in 81.
81. All right, 8,100. Let me bring it up here. So I'm, I'm looking apples to apples. What do you guys see? All right, starts at 517 with uniforms. These are landscapers and park maintainers. We budgeted 3,000 last year, so we dropped it down to 1,500. We have, each department pays for their own uniform, so we didn't use as much this, this year. So we, we cut it back to 1,500. Chemical, I try to keep, I try to keep it high because we, we take care of all, maintain all the parts, PD, all the stuff behind PD, the right-of-ways, everything out of this chemical budget. Which is, we budgeted 12, 16 for last year, but I dropped it down 2,000. So we're looking at 14,000 this year. But we, we went through and changed our chemical company. We're getting a better, better product and it's lasting longer and we're building a tolerance up to what we were spraying before and it wasn't working right. So we're spending more money in chemicals. So now that we switch, switch product, it seems to be working a lot better and I think we're going to get a better, better, better coverage and cheaper price. So let's see here. 629, landscape material. We're always buying fertilizer and stuff like that for the parks. We have the sports complex, the, what we call the Seventh Street Pocket Park, the Kern and Fifth Street parking, or the Neighborhood Park, Avonel Rice Park, and then all the landscape up and down 269 that we maintain. So this helps out with us as far as our, our fertilizers and chemicals that we need to maintain it. Tools, we're getting to the point right now where their quality board's going to be looking at us as far as our mowers and everything. We got, we don't have the tier, tier four motors that they want to see all the time. So we're getting to that spot where they're going to be pressing us to buy new equipment. But right now with our hand tools and everything, they're not pressing us too much on those right now. So pretty much we buy a few weed eaters a year to kind of rotate them in and out as they wear out. You know, they only last a couple of years, so we rotate them in and out. Other maintenance supplies such as sprinklers, time clocks and stuff like that. We have money for that. Conferences and training, professional services. The gas and electric for the park and all the different sites. Other maintenance supplies, we cut that down to 3,500. And that's all, that's all part of maintaining everything. So is there any questions on that department?
Questions?
Yeah, I just wondered. Yeah, this is customer Ramirez. I just wanted to ask you on professional services, what kind of professional services are those funds used for?
That would be like if we wanted to send somebody to training. Oh, professional service, that's if we had to design something. I'm sorry. That's if we got to call in our engineer to look at something that we need to have designed. That's part of the professional service we take it out of.
Or possibly bringing someone in for training?
Yeah, that too. Yeah, I mentioned training, but we have a line item for that. But yeah, we can use that for training, too. Every once, it's been a little while. We usually bring some arborists in to show us how to prune trees or, or what type of landscape would be good in the area. So that's usually what we use it for.
Any other questions? All right, then. We're moving on to fund 9,000.
9,000, animal control.
It's 43. Go ahead, Rob. We're there.
All right, let me bring it up here, so. Okay, this one starts at 517, too, as far as the uniforms, office supplies, forms, cleaning supplies, chemicals, equipment parts, professional service, telephone, animal clinic. We have the revolving vaccinations and spay and neuter program, conferences and training. They were scheduled to do some conference and, some training this year, but with the COVID-19, it was canceled. So we're able to put that money back into our, into the fund and save it for next year or whenever they decide they want to do the COVID drop where we can get our training done. But at this point in time, we're kind of, we're not able to get our medicine. So our, our guys have to stay trained so we can have people come in to look at our, our facility and what our training is to be able to get our euthanasium, euthanizing medicine anymore. Not a whole lot of companies that are, are willing to supply or back you on giving shots to animals anymore. The state's kind of phasing that stuff out, so we're looking for alternative treatments to be able to euthanize animals. So. So that's part of the money that we use for conferences and everything. Gas and electric, it's, it's been going up out there. They, that place is running 24/7. They're doing a good job out there. I like what they do and they stay on top of everything. You go out there, any given time, that place is immaculate. There any questions?
Yes, I, I have a question. Just kind of wanted to, to know what, you know, what originated the need for the overtime? I noticed that is 15,000. Year-to-date, this over budgeted by about $31,000. And then the, the full-time employees, regular time, it's, it's still 6,000 under. Just kind of want, you know, want to see where the need for overtime originates.
Hey, we, we have, the guys, they, the guys that go in and ask after hours or on the weekend to clean the kennel, that's where the overtime budget's coming from. The full-time overtime. We have our, our standard guys, the two guys that work the kennel during the, the working hours, eight to five or, or seven to four. And then after hours on the weekends and holidays, we have the person on call go in and clean the kennels. So that's where the overtime's coming from.
Is that part of the standby or is that some additional overtime?
Hold it then. I, I, can you repeat?
Yes, that's the person who is on standby, correct?
Yes, that's the person that's on call. It's not, they, they actually clean the kennel and they, they go out and unlock everything, the, the parks and everything like that. So it's, it's not just for, just, just being on call. It's, they do a lot of other stuff, so.
Rob, I think, I hate to interrupt you, Rob. I, I think what they're asking, what, what happens is when somebody's on call, they take that on-call time and they go unlock parks and they go check everything out. But when they have to go feed dogs and clean the kennel, that is actual overtime for them. It's not counted as their on-call time.
Yes. Sorry, I kind of misunderstand what you're talking about there. Sorry.
No, we got it. It, it's fine, Rob. I, I think that's more of a clarification. When they go to feed dogs and clean the kennels, that's overtime for the on-call person.
Okay, we're good with that?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we move on to fund 18,000.
May I make a statement, please? Just, um, just to share some information. The, when the shelter was built, it was with the goal to rescue as much as possible within the means that we have. And I'm very proud to say that between Avonel and Corcoran, there is at least a sixty-five percent rescue rate. So, I want to commend our animal control, uh, and management staff. They've done a terrific job and they have dealt with, uh, rescue agencies and have really, really made a, a good name for ourselves. So, Rob, thank you and your staff, and thank you council for your trust. But, they do, if you, we'll have to get you out there, Alex. I don't know if you've been there before, but it is a beautiful facility and we stayed for that for years to build that. So, anyway, thanks, Rob and council.
Welcome.
Another item to note on the overtime too, when they are out cleaning the kennels, it's hour for hour. Whereas if they are called out for, um, while they're on, on call, they are paid a minimum of three hours for each time that they are called out. Yeah, it's part of the MOU with the bargaining units.
Any other questions? So, move on to fund eighteen thousand.
It's on page fifty-two.
Everybody on fifty-two? Rob, are you there? Rob, he is?
Did he mute himself and not forget?
Rob, Scott?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. We're at Equipment and Maintenance Department, eighteen thousand, Rob.
Yes, we're, uh, going to start at six oh seven, fuel, which is allocated out for all the departments. We just kind of, uh, set a budget and they, uh, transfer everything out of this into other departments. Same with parts, six twenty-five. Same with six twenty-six, six thirty-one. Other maintenance supplies is, uh, you know, the oils and everything we use, filters and, 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 um, training equipment and everything, professional service, six fifty-five. That was, uh, that would be, I guess, if we had to take anything in to, uh, get looked at. We've been down that road before with our sweeper. Um, telephone, conference training. Nacho was going, getting his training and everything for all the different, uh, air conditioning and, and troubleshooting and all that type of stuff for the newer cars that were coming in through the police force. Um, so, uh, we had to cut him back a little bit. So, we're, uh, probably going to try to get him in some closer classes, maybe, uh, let him, let him, uh, see what specialized training he wants to go into. Um, we have gas and electric for, um, other miscellaneous, water contract, and that's, uh, pretty much, uh, most of our budget is the six, six hundred numbers. So, is there any other questions?
Yeah, the seven hundred and eight number.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's for the insurance and everything on all the vehicles and everything, that's allocated out too.
It jumped that much?
Ninety-five thousand dollars, that's my question to Don.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did it increase by a hundred and fifty percent? That's, that's an increase between the, the year-to-date to the new upper budget. A hundred and fifty percent increase, that seems, that seems like we need another carrier.
Did that get doubled by chance, Don, in the line item?
I did check, but I will check again.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it does seem, and I circled it too.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, sorry, Rob.
Oh, that's all right. I was, had to take a double take on that myself.
Any other questions?
Part of it has to do with the replacement value for the property. I know that's part of it, but I will double-check on that.
Okay, thank you.
The replacement value of some of our buildings. Um, you would think that each year that cost would go up. And where, where it's showing on our insurance information is they are actually depreciating our buildings for the replacement cost. So, there was a question about that and we looked, um, and asked the appraiser to reevaluate.
Yes, we did. And we will, we'll look into that and check. And then this is, uh, this department becomes a zero department because it's solely allocated out.
Yep. Is there any other questions?
I don't know, no, I'm good, Rob.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Apartment, E, Chief, twelve thousand five hundred. Can anybody hear me? Yeah, so, next.
It's on page-
It's back, isn't it?
Yes. Forty, page forty-nine, twelve five hundred. We did have to backtrack a little, forty-nine?
Yes.
It's forty-nine. Forty-nine.
He's got one little on the next page.
All right, you're on, Chief.
Hello, good, good, good evening, everybody. Um, I have our budget before us here. Let's see, I'll, I'll start at, um, five seventeen, which is my uniform maintenance account. All the other, uh, costs associated with a budget above that are all payroll numbers. And so, um, can't really control that other than the overtime number. Uniform maintenance, same, um, office supplies in six oh one, we increased by fifteen hundred dollars just due to the, um, potential buying of more cleaning supplies for office through the COVID-19 pandemic. So, we're anticipating that. And the, the, the cost of those cleaning supplies probably will increase just the way things are. And so, we just increased about fifteen hundred dollars. Our, uh, six oh one point five went up three thousand dollars. And that was because there's an increase in our evidence dot com, um, which is our body storage, body camera storage. And so, um, that, that kind of, it goes up a little bit every year and then as we have data. So, we can set parameters based on what kind of call the officers go on, which dictates to the system how much or how long we store the data. And so, we've had some data on there for quite some time due to the cases pending in court for a few years. And so, we, um, increased that by three thousand dollars for that. Let's see, I'm sorry, I talked about clean supplies already, the office supplies. Um, Maria wanted to raise it, sorry, I had those two confused. More paper, we, we, uh, we're not allowed to electronically file reports anymore with the Kings County District Attorney's Office due to a little disagreement between the court system and the DA's office. So, we're back to paper reports for that for the time being. And so, it's kind of odd, we're going backwards in all this technology. But, in essence, their, uh, their two computer programs do not communicate very well or at all. And, uh, there's been some problems along the way. So, we will be, um, doing hand, uh, carrying over reports again. Um, decreased our fuel budget quite a bit, hopefully the fuel costs stayed down and, uh, we're able to do that. So, there's a ten thousand dollar, uh, negative right there. Um, everything else from six twenty-five down to six twenty-six remained the same. And, um, six twenty-six point one, the vehicle maintenance account, we reduced that by twenty-five hundred, uh, just due to the, that we, uh, obviously we have a newer fleet, but, um, some of the cars are older than the other cars, even though they're all fairly new. But, um, you just never know what you're going to come up with that. See, the next decrease would be six fifty-five, our professional services account. We lowered that by eleven hundred just based on where we're at now compared to what we budgeted for. Um, and for that, we pay for, we have an exterminator, we have alarm costs, we have, um, background investigations on new employees, we have medical physicals for new employees and that we have something that we have to adhere to. We have psychological examinations for new employees. And sometimes when we have critical incidents such as officer-led shootings or some other horrific crime the officers have to witness, uh, we do send them for a quick little debrief, um, to make sure their mental health is, uh, up to speed. So, we take that out of that account. We have a slight increase in sixty-five point one, that's our Kings County IT services. That's who we contract with for our computer, um, technology. That's just a number that, there, there, a number kind of fluctuates a little bit every year. But this, uh, year, forty-seven hundred dollar increase. Um, we still have the same number of devices on the system, but the, um, the county must have got a raise in the last year or two. They allocate those costs out to us as well, so. Going, everything else is a zero, all the way down to, um, six fifty-five point nine, so that's a homeland security grant. And so, what that pays for is, we have to, um, kind of what Rob talked about earlier, we have to pay for the product that we, we buy and then they pay us back later. So, we are allocated twenty-six thousand dollars for this fiscal year. And we do have some projects on the table, we have waiting for some approval from FEMA. But, um, they've been a little busy on the pandemic, so we're still waiting, holding pattern for that. Going on down to conferences and training, our six sixty-one account for the new council members out there. The, the state requires our officers to have twenty-four hours of advanced officer training every other year. And this is the year we're going to get hit with it. So, we are, um, we still have to do that, even though it's at thirty thousand, we lowered it five thousand dollars. We probably won't be sending our people away as much because of the COVID-19. And that's why we're only at about twenty thousand, expanded it now versus thirty-five thousand. Um, there are some local trainings, but sometimes when we have specialty assignments, um, transfers within an apartment, we have to send those people out of the area. So, but we get lowered by five thousand later. Um, our memberships lowered that, which is, sorry, six seventy-two, we lowered that by a thousand, we just weren't using it. Lower our miscellaneous by five hundred. Our general services liability that everybody keeps referring to, that went up, um, thirty-one hundred dollars or so. And then, uh, the big one for us is our construction account, which was some carryover money that we've had trying to update the east wing, the main wing, the original wing of the police department to make it somewhat livable like the north wing did with the state money we got. But, um, in the spirit of budget cooperation, we, uh, gave that up this year. Hopefully, we can get it back some other time down the road when things are more fruitful. But, um, always happy to help out. That's, that's-
It can muted.
I'm sorry.
We cannot hear you, it, it got muted.
No, I'm, I must be the signal, I'm, uh, I'm good on my end, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now we can.
Where do I need to start again?
You were, last thing you were talking about was construction on the east wing.
Oh, yeah, oh, man, that's a touchy subject, so I gotta do it again, huh? Okay. We, we, we gave up our sixty-two thousand dollars, that's always been in our account, trying to hopefully improve the east wing, make it somewhat livable like the north wing. But, um, obviously challenging budget year ahead, so we gave ours up. And hopefully, the funds will be available for us, uh, at a later date. So, um, always happy to help, do our part, and, um, that's about all we have for us.
Rusty, would you find, just, uh, for council, just to remind, how many employees you have that are covered by this payroll?
So, I have nineteen.
Account support staff, the two support staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty if you want to count, uh, Mr. Tuttle, who's a reserve officer, so twenty total, but he's very, very, very part-time. So, nineteen full-time officers, full-time employees.
So, what is in law enforcement, since it's all combined in one budget, it's a little, when you see that number, you think, oh, okay, well, that's where we need to go. But if you were to make each officer its own department, it would make more sense. But that's not how it's done. So, we need to keep in mind that, um, you have nineteen employees and they are part of, of this budget from five oh one to five twelve. Thanks, Rusty, that's all I had, someone else may have questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, um, I'm unsure if this would be a question for the chief or for Melissa. When the, uh, police department first came around, uh, what was the assessment made to, to allocate certain funds to, to the police department? And over the, over the weekend, I had some spare time to make an analysis of my own, looking at several budgets from other cities, how much they spend on the police department in allocating it on a per capita basis. And I realized that we're much higher than nearby cities like Kalinga, Huron and Lemoore. If you allocate them by, by population, we're spending about fifty-seven percent more than them. I just kind of want to know, how, how, how was the allocation made to the police department? Because, you know, we have, um, we have, uh, yeah, let's say ten thousand people and we're spending three point two million dollars. But I'm looking at figures from the previous budget. Kalinga has sixteen thousand people, they spend less than us. Huron has seventy-two hundred and they spend, you know, of course significantly less. And then, on, on Lemoore, they have twenty-six thousand people and they spend five point seven million dollars. So, I just kind of want to know how the allocation came about and why, it seems to me an overspending on my end, but I might have a different perspective, I kind of just want to know, how was it allocated at first?
Rusty, do you want to begin that conversation or do you want me to reply?
Yeah, we can, uh, talk about it from here, from here. So, we started out with sixteen, sixteen full-time officers and we gained one officer through a federal grant that we applied for, which has significantly, um, limited the gang violence in town. We haven't had a gang homicide in four years, I'm not sure the other cities can say that as well. But our, so we, with that, we had to keep that body for an, an extra year, um, as part of the agreement. Some of the council might remember that. I guess what you need to look at maybe is, I mean, the number, if you look at the budget number alone versus the number of officers they have, and then maybe look at the crime rate associated with that, and then obviously their pay is, something can't be overlooked. But, um, that's kind of where I would leave it at, if you had any other, if you have any follow-up questions about that?
Questions, I do have, uh, many, but, you know, I was, I was, I was just trying to, to get an understanding, how, how do I allocate three point two million dollars and spend, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars more than Kalinga when they have a population by, you know, that supersedes us by about sixty-five hundred people? If you look at it on, on a number basis, it seems to me a little bit steep. Uh, just kind of want to know the understanding of, you know, the, the crime rates, the, you know, the support, that, that kind of amount. I know Kalinga has a very high crime rate and they spend less than us, so, just, just kind of want to, you know, get a general understanding on that.
I know at one point, maybe a year or two ago- I know at one point, maybe a year or two ago, their staffing levels were so low that they had to let lay people off, probably during a budget crisis crunch. And so if just go by the budget alone, you have to look at the number of officers they have and I versus maybe their, you know, if it might look like we're overstuffed, but they could be severely understuffed as well. I'm not sure where they're at right now and all that. But if you, it's more of an in-depth analysis rather than just looking at budget numbers versus employees, I guess that that would be my best way to answer that at this point.
And Melissa, would we be able to conduct some kind of analysis, you know, as a CDC where we are on spending, you know, on Kings County?
We can, I can tell you just with knowledge that our officers are the second lowest in payment. But just a little bit of background, and I will do whatever I can within my power to provide the information to council. But when Avonel Police Department, we were paying about 1.8 million and it was going up to have an officer here, maybe two, and this was an agreement with Kings County, and we had them for years and years. There were several studies actually done, undertaken by the city when we incorporated to see, did we have the funds to fund our own police department? Because of, they wanted to have, you know, a, a police department that would be here and be fully staffed. Okay. But the decision was made when council felt it was time to go forward. There was a study that was done, I believe it was completed in 2008, that according to our budget numbers and what the wants and needs were of the community, and it wasn't just the city that was asked, there were community members asked as to, you know, should we go forward or whatever? That we would hire and keep a very high standard with officers. And I don't know if all, you know, those that remember, we, our crime rate was, it was high, it was not good. And the council felt, I believe at the time, that if we had our own department and had our own police chiefs, that they would take steps to reduce that crime rate, which they have. So there's a balance there too. And I, I personally cannot compare ours to others. We don't know what their needs are. You know, we know what our needs are. This was a commitment that was made to fund and have our own police department. And it's not just the officers, we're talking the facility itself too, which we didn't have that overhead before. The substation was located down at the justice court, the courthouse. So there's, there are more things to take into consideration. And it is, when you see the number, it takes you back and I get that and I understand it. But there was a decision made to have the best officers that we could find, you know, within reason and the train. And we have such a good program here. Other people want our officers because they're so well-trained and there are other chiefs that have told the chief that, I've had two that have told me that as well. But there's, you know, it's depending on what the, you know, city desires. We have, we've had really good leaders, which makes a big difference in your police department. But I think it'd be the, the final result, or where are we, is our crime rate? And can you put a money value on lives? But I'll be happy to, I can certainly do a review. I would look at communities that are our size, nothing like Lemoore hampered, they're large, but we can certainly look at others and see how they're staffed and what their budget, we can do that, there's no problem.
Yeah, but you know, of course, don't take this the wrong way. I really am thankful for the way that the community is, it's a safe community and it's a very nice community. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not overspending. You know, perhaps, you know, if the study was conducted on 2008, we're in 2020, we can conduct another study and, you know, evaluate the needs of the, of the community. You know, we're here for the community. So, you know, I don't want this to be seen as something bad. I just want to make sure that the finances of the city, they're, they're good, you know. And of course, if we're overspending, that's the first thing that needs to be reduced.
Right, it's because it's a large number. And again, if you were to take your officers and make them their own departments, it would look a little bit differently. And when I brought the attention to council about the pie chart at 53% or 54%, just based on the knowledge that I have over the 10 years in other cities where I've seen their budgets and discussed as our city managers, 54% is actually, it's a good number. It could be lower, right, but what do you weigh in balance, what is important? And we knew going in years ago that having our own department was going to cost more. We knew that. So we, it's a decision, the ongoing decision. Understand too, and Rusty doesn't bring it up, and the, the assistant chief doesn't bring it up and the officers don't. Let me tell you that we may have 16 officers or 15 officers, you may have four officers off at the same time. And you have the other officers that actually make up, you know, coverage, people that are off field. So there are different things to look at other than that number, because it is, it's, it's, I look at, that's probably one of the first budgets I look at. Kind of sets a tone for the year. But it's, you know, it's, is it a priority? And again, it's, it's up to council to decide what they would like. But there are several things that council needs to take into consideration when, when you look at those. And that we do have our own department, there are expenses associated with that. And probably again, I think the most significant piece is that our crime rate is very low and there is, how do you put a price tag on that? But I will certainly do that if that is the wish of council. To check other cities and staffing and budget.
Unless the other council wanted information, otherwise it's just.
Actually, about 2008, 2009, I was actually one of the community members that actually that came into council, asking, asking the city council at that time to consider creating our own police department. I did see the need because of Kings County deputies were transferred so many times back and forth and they really at that time didn't get to know the community at the best. And, you know, I had a community member at that time, so the need for Avonel to have their own police department. But also as time goes by, we can see the difference between deputy sheriff and our own police department. But it's, it's never, you know, too late to evaluate, you know, performance and how we're doing compared to our cities, see if we can save a little, a little bit here, a little bit there, but also keeping in mind the community needs and also the input from the community, you know, how they feel, money was spent. Yes, it is. Someone may have a different opinion, but we're here to listen to everyone and we leave more in that direction for we have this safe community.
I also agree with President Preciado and President Ramon, I think we need to proceed with that, with what councilman Ramirez said about looking into that, you will see where we're standing with our cities?
You know, I just would like to add another thing. Of course, that the, the purpose of this is not to hurt the community at all. That's, you know, the safety of our community should be a priority, but at the same time, just, you know, I broke it down on a per capita basis and just want to make sure that we're not overspending. Perhaps, you know, if we were, which I'm not saying we, we are exactly, but those funds could be used for community development, economic development, you know, things like that that will benefit the community. That is, if there's an overspending, if there's, if we come out, you know, everything is, everything is fine according to the needs of the community by any, by any means, you know, we will leave that.
So you have direction as far as that? Yeah. All right. Any other questions for the chief? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. So we move on to item F, Melissa, Fund 10, 1,000. Which is page 16.
We can actually, before we roll back a little.
Sure.
We have Fund 10,000, which is public safety, I'd like to do, and then streetlights, which is 11,000. But public safety is on page 45, I believe.
45, yeah.
It's public safety, Fund 10, 1,000.
Page 45.
Okay. So the, the purpose of this is actually for our fire services. We contract with Kings County to have two firemen, fire personnel onboard in Avonel 24/7. So we are covered 24 hours a day. Years ago, roll back, the city, there is a fire assessment fee that you'll see on your taxes. And it goes into a fire fund and that's how Kings County was paying for all of their fire departments. It came to where the, the, those assessments were not covering that. And the county fire asset would basically, we meet with them at the table to come up with a solution. If not, they were looking at a decrease in the size of each station. We were so remote that it, at the time, basically was not an item that we entertained because we need to have, you know, our closest probably response to be in Kettleman City. There's a shift that happens when there's a call, let's just say that. But we wanted to ensure that our community was going to be covered. So for some reason, Avonel leaves, Kettleman City comes in and there's a, you know, a whole domino effect. Anyway, we have had an agreement with Kings County for, I would say, a good 12 years and each year it increases, but their cost too, their expenditures increase as well. It costs well over a million dollars to run the station here. Actually, it's more than a million now. So we're paying a proportional cost. I did increase the amount that is paid, it was 365, that was agreed upon by a two-year agreement. We increased it to 380. And for those of you that have been here over the past few years, you know that Kings County has had some concerns about the, the amount that Avonel is paying for a station in Avonel and the amount that Corcoran is paying for fire services in Corcoran. So it's, it's a negotiated amount, but it definitely is a needed service. They don't, I don't believe they have any, any longer, do they have any one-man stations? There's not much one, one fire person can do because they have to have backup. And, you know, there are rules and regulations that, that cover fire services and their personnel. So mainly that's what this, this amount is for, for fire services that we pay Kings County, so that we will have two fire personnel on 24/7. And they actually have been a really great people to work with and we're very proud. And if, for those of you who don't know, it's, that's where kids want to go. They want to go to the fire station and people actually show up there because they feel it's safe. So it's important, we've had the fire, well, not necessarily that fire station, it's the newer one, there was one in that same area for as long as I can remember. So anyway, that is for the fire contract. There's a public safety allocation, it's allocated out to other departments. But anyway, that's what this is for specifically. Any questions? We have three line items. Okay. Okay, so the next would be emergency services department, and that is on page 47. And then we'll go back to the other. In 1995, I believe, it was 95, that is when our water line broke. It was our 18-inch line. We had two, two water plants, one had been dismantled, it was no longer operable. And then we had the 18-inch line, which is plant two. Our main transmission line broke, it's when we had a lot of rain. It was up in the, the old county road up in the oil fields. I had washed away, so the integrity of the line was in question. Anyway, it ended up splitting. We were down to three, three feet of water in our storage. We learned very quickly that we needed to have funds set aside in order to be able to respond to emergencies. But that's just my background. I want you to know that this really has a, it has a purpose. And the reason that we keep it is that if we need, you know, to telephone service or if we need any other supplies, knowing that if we declared a local emergency, there's a good chance that we will be reimbursed, at least a portion of it. But we do need to have funds on hand in even that there is an emergency. So, and then, believe me, it's been, well, look, there's money in emergency services. It's like, no, it's emergency services, we don't touch that one. But that is the purpose of this fund and we'd like to keep it intact.
And do these, do these funds transfer to the emergency or are they just?
They, they don't really transfer, we just rebudget them. Yeah, that money would go into reserves and then we would budget for the new year. Yep. Any questions?
For, oh, I can understand having telephone, I can understand having money set aside for emergency, but conference and training.
We are required to.
Is that like the NIMs?
We're disaster workers.
Yeah.
And there is a process that's followed, it's SIMs.
SIMs and NIMs.
Right. It, and it's because California did so well with SIMs, now basically national does the same thing. And there are different conferences you can go to.
Okay, that's, I was kind of wondering.
I'm sorry, and I should have, you know, taken a break. My training was at March Airport Station where it was, it was pretty intense. And this wasn't too long after the emergency that we had. I ran the emergency operations center. And if I didn't know what to do, but you know what? We had a bank of telephones and we learned how to do this very quickly. So my training was on the job, we made national news. So I had my three minutes of national coverage on a day when there was no water in town. So just, you know, anyway, I find it very hilarious now, but it was pretty intense at the time, but that's what it's for. And we have, most of our staff have received training. And I don't know, Rusty Sallafon, he's our emergency services director and he would oversee all of the operations, but we all are, should be familiar with that works. Does that help?
Yeah, I just, I just wondered if that was for.
What it was for.
That training.
Did you want to go back to?
1,000 is actually council's budget? Yep, we're going all the way back. And now I'm actually.
16.
Sorry, I'm in revenues. City council, that will be on page.
16.
He's saying it. Say it louder.
If I hold it far enough away, I can see it's a 16. This is actually city council's budget and it is where the budget in which council's paid from, the stipend that council receives. The longevity incentive was a policy that was set in place three, maybe four years ago. The longevity actually comes out of council's budget. And it would just depend on who is eligible for that longevity pay as to how that number is calculated. Don would note that. The conference and training, that's council, attending League of California City, training conferences. I don't believe anyone attended conferences last year, but that's what those funds are for. I don't believe anyone attended conferences last year, but, uh, that's what those funds are for.
Going to any this year.
Memberships will be the League of California Cities. It will be LAFCO, which is Local Agency Formation Committee, uh, out of Hampford. That would be actually the largest percentage of this.
For which one?
Um, it's, um, LAFCO.
No, which line item?
Oh, I'm sorry, League of California Cities. It would be memberships for, or six seventy-two. Uh, and also ACAPS, Cities Allied with Prisons. It's actually for their, that's a foreign membership. That's all cities in California can become a member of the, uh, Cities Allied with Prisons Committee. Other miscellaneous, that is where actually council would fund any funding requests from. To date, I am not aware that we have received any type of funding request. I see that there was something on here. Historical. I'm assuming that was kind of.
Page markers.
Page markers. Okay.
We have not received anything to date.
Right, and I haven't heard of any. The one that, and I spoke to Dawn today about it, the one that council has supported religiously every year is for the, um, Commission on Aging. And it's, I, I think a total of thirty-five hundred dollars. We have not received anything from Bobby, from Commission on Aging. But that is what helps fund the nutrition program and provide services for senior citizens. Um, so anyway, I actually budgeted ten thousand dollars. We received nothing from, uh, any of the clubs, organizations this year, nothing from the Historical Society. So, I, I just wanted to. If anybody, and to my knowledge, no one has called or asked. Dawn said no one.
What about RAP?
I'm sorry?
RAP.
Have not heard from Kike. Heard from them.
Wow.
Since their, the facilities that they use have not been open, so I'm not quite certain exactly the status of, of RAP. And that's actually another line item. Uh, let's see. The City Appreciation Dinner, that has been, I think, this is only the second time since nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, that we have not had a City Appreciation Dinner. And that is to appreciate people in our community that have actually done, um, and we have so many that do so many things, but we try to honor a few of our citizens and other groups. It provides them a time to honor people within their organizations as well. It's actually a very, very nice gathering. Uh, the Recycling Grant, that's the five thousand dollars that we receive every year from recycling. And if we don't use it, it goes back to the state, but we do have to have an expenditure item to be able to expend the funds. And you'll see in revenue, it'll make more sense once you see general fund revenue as to how that works. Citizens, I'm, oh, sorry, CRT, Citizens Response Team, we allocate money every year, um, for the, the good citizens that decide that they want to serve their community. It provides them for equipment, shirts, jackets, or whatnot. Uh, I don't believe we've had any requests this year. Contract funding, uh, six seventy-five, uh, point five contract funding, that is where RAP would be paid.
Well, that one was.
Yes.
I knew they weren't another line item, but.
But to date, uh, there has been no funding according to this report, that they have, even though, um, Kike did, he provided one presentation one time this year that I, that I remember. But no, we haven't heard from him yet. And then, I know we've discussed this, uh, a few times. The refuse contract offset, the hundred and thirty-two thousand, that's actually part of the landfill host fees. It was, um, basically something that was done by the council, made, a decision made many, many years ago, around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that from those host fees, a portion of them, um, that the, the community member should actually receive some kind of benefit, as I recall how that all came about. So when Mid Valley Disposal requested, and across the board twenty percent, that's when council said, let's take and use some of those host fees, and let's help offset that. Well, it, at the time, it was a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Now it's up to about a hundred and seventy-four thousand, and that's probably a conversation we need to have. Um, but, and I, it, I guess the bad thing, the good thing is that the community didn't have to pay additional. The bad thing is that we haven't really said anything, so our community doesn't know. That, you know, they are receiving a benefit. Right, right. So, anyway, that, that's shown in council's budget. Uh, council's budget is not allocated out, so, um, it's solely by, funded by general fund.
Mel, can we go back? For the contract funding, they actually, RAP actually has been paid for one quarter, but because the last quarter of last year's was part of the period thirteen, uh, when we have to accrue, um, expenses that were due from last year into this year and, and all of that, it just looks like nothing's been paid, but they were actually paid for first quarter.
So did they show up in period thirteen and go to the previous year?
Yes, it did go in the period. And then when it's reversed, because that's how accounting works, it's reversed back out. Now it looks like nothing's been paid when there actually was one quarter paid.
Well, I do remember that he made one presentation that I can recall.
Yes, he has made one.
Yeah. And it was actually, council would fund, I want to say, it was either thirty or forty, let me see, what was the number? Uh, thirty thousand of previous years. There was a concern that Wonderful Company was going to withdraw their support, and if so, would the city consider, um, funding additional funds? But it was very clear that if they received additional funds from Wonderful Company, then the city would not front, you know, the extra money.
I do have a question though. Even though, uh, the bill line is already, they still money approved for the budget for RAP and all the other ones.
You mean for this year? Okay.
Twenty twenty-one.
Right. It, the, according to the budget, the money is still there, but it depends on how much money you have in your checkbook.
But, uh, what I mean, since the bill line is already passed through, but there's still.
Oh, oh, remember, if you remember, the, that was, are you talking about the miscellaneous requests or RAP?
Both.
Okay, RAP is an online item, and they have their own agreement, so that would be a little bit different. We would bring that agreement to council to consider, um, approving an agreement for a future year. So it, that's why we made a difference, or it's own line item years ago. The other community, uh, organizations, it would be up to council to decide if they wanted to consider any requests. Um, understanding it's been a very, very different and difficult year. And, uh, I know Commission on Aging, they depend on the cities for their match to help them with their grant funding, because there has to be a certain amount of local match, and that would be totally up to council. We just set that policy because we were getting requests here and there, and, um, it was better to have them all at once so we could present to council. But again, that would be totally up to council how you'd like to handle it. So any questions about your budget?
Um, I'm just on, uh, full-time employees and the, and the overtime. Is this the funds where council gets paid from, or where does, uh, what, what, what does that pay?
The, the full-time employee, that is council stipend.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, overtime, all I can figure is if our staff is doing something for council.
Okay.
That's mostly Angie's.
Oh, okay. And she doesn't, yeah, she.
And at the end of the year, I take a look at all the budgets and the budget numbers, and if we've allocated too much of Angie's that should have been, it gets moved, it gets reallocated.
What you'll see is that it's, it won't be this time because we were working on budget. It will be at the next meeting. Dawn will bring back, she's going to review the budget and check the bottom-line numbers on everything. And again, this all depends on what our checkbook says. We, you know, you can budget all you want, but you have to have the money to support it. Uh, but we may have some budgets that, for whatever reason, have exceeded their amount, and we can't, if it's a general fund department, I may say, I have two thousand here. I have no problem to transfer it over to Angie's department, as long as it doesn't affect the bottom-line number, because that's what council approved. And that's what Dawn will be doing. She'll bring that back. And if there are any departments or refunds that have exceeded, then it would take council action to, uh, approve that either. And also to transfer any funds, uh, within the seven hundred series toward the end of each budget, you'll see seven hundred series. Except council, you don't get a seven hundred series. Just kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, is that if there are funds, uh, such that you'll see in the water collection, or water distribution, uh, Public Works would like, they need another piece of equipment. So they would put money in the seven hundred series to, it's kind of like a savings account. I think we reviewed this. And that, at the end of the year, as long as there's that amount, then Dawn would request that council consider transferring that over to the CIP. So that will happen at the next meeting. That's how we, we have to, we can't be less than zero at the end of the year.
The other thing you will find that drove me nuts when I was learning about budgets is you'll notice that some of the budgets we went across, they hadn't spent anything, but they still wanted more for next year. Some of the departments like to hold their money till the end of the year in case there's an emergency and they have to spend it. And then, right about now, they'll go out and buy all their supplies and their chemicals and the stuff for next year. So when we look at it, it doesn't look like they've spent anything, but they're going to all at once. Right, Dawn?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
It's, it's basic, if you have expenditures, it starts kind of in April and in May, if you have expenditures, large expenditures, you need to do them because you get into the payment of bills, and it hits that July, which is in the next budget year, so it gets a little confusing. But they're all pretty good. They are pretty good.
And then, last question, just on the longevity incentive. Is, is that the one we discussed on the, on the the longevity for, for, for the city employees, or is that?
Yes, same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that was part of policy.
So that's probably Angie too. Because Angie's us. Or a percentage of her is us.
Well, that's for all of them. I don't know which is.
It would be for all of the, as we.
Oh, that's for all the longevity?
Whoever, whoever is up for longevity for this next year would be included in this budget.
Well, that's good, because I hate that much just.
And that's where, that's the two-tier, where if you were, um, hired before July first, two thousand sixteen, you get, you get it in one direction. Well, they're both in the same direction, but, but if you're hired after July first of two thousand sixteen, you get it for the first ten years. And then at the tenth year, it stops, and then you pick up ten percent of your retiree, um, insurance benefit as long as you retire from the city.
That was the change that we made, um, to help kind of reverse what was going on because of benefits.
The last, sorry, on the.
No, go ahead.
You're new. Yeah. I, I had mine here. I was just like you. I'm so.
Yeah, um, you know, of course, dealing with other financial statements and stuff, um, and, you know, learning a business, other miscellaneous sometimes is questionable on, on certain financial statements, et cetera. You might have explained it, but I'm not sure if I, if I caught it. Uh, what, what is that one, the other miscellaneous?
On councils or just generally? Kind of generally? Let's say, uh, and what I think of is furniture or equipment, you've already expended what you have. And, uh, you need another hundred or two hundred dollars to be able to expend. It's still within your budget. Or just some kind of expenditure that kind of came out of the clear blue sky. It's not enough, uh, to bring to council. It would still be within the bottom-line budget. You hope that the line items that you have will cover your needs, but it's, you just, you don't know.
Right.
And there, yes, there are some budgets that use miscellaneous. It's probably Public Works, they say, that use it, because there, there's so many, and you don't know when a water line is going to break, and you can budget based on, you know, what the past has shown, it, within the budget. So it's, I don't want to say it's a safety net, but it, it kind of is. But it choose wisely. It's not to go out and, you know, buy new gloves or whatever. However, if all of those, that line item that would pay for the gloves and the safety glasses and all, it was expended, they could go to other miscellaneous to help you for those. And just, so I know you don't, you don't know our system, and Pablo, you may remember from last year, just explaining, our financial system, there, it's a series of steps. So just because, let's say, a department, this is what I want, but this is what I need. Uh, the requisitions are input, and I'm the first one, basically, other than the, the department head, that will see what that is. And there are questions asked. It's, you know, chemicals, we know chemicals, and they're going to be very expensive. But you look at also, you know, who has made the request and whatnot. Uh, and then the system will tell you, that line item is basically over. There's an error message, so we know that there's a little bit of an issue. And if I go ahead and approve, then I provide Dawn with the copy saying, we need to make, uh, the transfers or to find the funds. And it happens during the end of the, the fiscal year. Uh, so, once I approve, it goes back to our finance assistant for approval for the POs, but that's just the, you know, the first part. Those are the first three steps. There are two more steps. So there are checks and balances along the way too.
And another, another note for other miscellaneous is sometimes it just doesn't fit anywhere else in the line items, and so, you know, if all else fails, it goes in other miscellaneous.
Okay, so.
I do have another question. It's six seventy-five point five. So at the end, uh, you said that went up to about one sixty-five. We need to change the number for twenty twenty-one. Yeah, a hundred, yes. Yeah, a hundred and thirty-two thousand for the contract funding.
Oh, right, the hundred and thirty-two that we, uh, the year, the amounts that, and that was that year that the request was made to increase. But we have additional population, so, you know, do you say no to the people that have opened up new water services or new homes that you didn't expect that impact? Which we didn't, because council wanted to do a really, really good thing. So knowing that it's, you know, it's about forty, like, or fifty thousand dollars, that's been over a good ten years, eleven years.
You said, yeah, but right now, you said it went, it went up from one thirty-two to about one sixty-five?
I know, but we put one thirty-two in there, yeah.
But we're, but we're still giving money to everyone?
Yes, it's still being offset. The twenty percent is offset. We didn't anticipate growth, is what I'm trying to say. We didn't anticipate it.
Yeah, that's kind of not going to fly accounting-wise.
We can, I'm, we can certainly do it. It's, it'll go into, it offsets the water fund. Because it, that's what it's for, the water and, and utilities, but it's actually the twenty percent across the board, so.
No, that's refuse.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's refuse. It's Mid Valley Disposal, that's refuse only, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm thinking of all the other bills that's up in nine ninety-eight. Uh, but yeah, and, and there's a good chance, because of fuel and whatever, we could be looking at another increase over the next couple of years or another year.
Well, then, we really should be putting it up, because, you know, we've done this before. We have it, we have it, we have it, and then when we do, it's a whole lot bigger, and we have a hard time justifying it. If we go, if we just bring it up as it goes up. It's, it's easier to explain.
It, it is, and, you know, I apologize, but it was a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, I understand that.
So what, what is the actual number, if you know?
It was about a hundred and seventy-four thousand. I saw it when we were reviewing it, just to get an idea of what the true picture was. And understandably, there's growth.
That is what is, let's just say, given to the community to cover the offset.
Yeah. Because it would show, this is our expense side, but you'll so, see it on the revenue side, so it should, you know, wash out. We can change that, because all we do is increase the revenue on general fund.
Because other ones, we won't be able to tell, you know, what's the increase, the combination is just now, but we will see it, we'll think, we're still a hundred and thirty-two. The combination is just now, but we will see it, we'll think that we're still at 132.
And it's not, yeah. It was, it was one of those going, oh my gosh, that's right. And it's been, it was 2008, I believe, is when this was done and it went into effect in 2009. We can do, we can do this. But it will, it'll show on the offset of the revenue as well. All right. Okay. Okay. So any more questions about council's budget? Okay. So if you go to page 21, that's the city manager's department.
Which was 21?
21.
21. We're going backwards.
Okay.
Actually, it was forward from where we were at.
My pages must be messed up because I got 15, then I got 22. And there's 20.
You just restacked them upside down.
I know, I have them all spread out, so I'm having to go, okay, well, I put that here and put that there.
You see one of the biggest ones, huh?
It's the bigger, eight. 24. You said 21?
21.
21, yep. And it's been three, actually 2,000.
Very small.
I'm not, it's, the department, 2,000.
You can go ahead and talk. I'll find it.
It's, it's okay. I was doing the same thing and I may have to find the city attorney too, so I understand. Okay, this is the budget that I work from and my time is allocated out basically to all departments because that's where I work. And that includes the operating authority as well. Don does have an allocation sheet, so, which we have to have for the auditors so we can see how we allocate anything out. So my, my position is fully allocated. The only other thing we have is city manager, the memberships. I didn't, there was no activity in my budget this past year. Conference and training, that's for my time up and down the road. I don't, I didn't, I did apply and this may include that I wanted to attend the city managers conference that they hold every year. I hadn't been in several years, but I'm glad that I canceled because right after that is when everything basically shut down. But I, if I go to the lead California cities, that's going to take about half of it like it does with council. But it's just basically meetings and registration. That's all it's for. Other miscellaneous, there you go. It's a hundred dollars. And furniture and equipment, I think that there is some money in CIP. My desk is falling apart.
You've said that for the last four years.
I know. Well, I thought about going out to see what kind of inventory we have out at Public Works to see if there's a discount there. So anyway.
Check the C-trains.
There could be something.
No, there's nothing in the C-train.
Anyway, that, are there any questions? Just understand that my, my position is totally allocated out.
As is general services and finance both.
So.
25, city attorney?
The attorney?
23?
Or no, 25.
25.
Okay, I'm where you were going, Dan.
What? I found mine.
25.
From 4 to 5,000. Okay, guess I'm sharing this here. This is for the chairs, the attorney, Mr. Farley, the chair of the mayor and the ally. Understand, a, a shortage are probably around 700,000 dollars in our own departments and charges are probably around 10,000 dollars in our city mayor, although anything over the meetings that we have, attend to meetings, whether it's Mr. Farley or someone in the authority, someone in the committee, attend a plan commission meeting, it's good to have the local board as well. I have worked with Mr. Farley for many years and we are so lucky that we have an office that's all stacked with amendments and very prompt to return any type of response. You know, so, um, this, we had an exceptional year this last year, we did. We were working on easements, 31, the. Oh, come on. Do you have your eyes on the, how about, um? What? I'm sorry, I have, what was like?
When was the West Hills, uh, deal that we were challenging, West Hills?
That was, yeah.
Yeah. No, it's not last year.
It's very around 130,000 here, but it actually evens out that. We did have a couple of years this last year. It'll come in the end of this year, which is pretty good.
And there were a couple of litigations with.
Litigations, but not, also any type of agreement such as the definition, that he reviews, any type of agreement to be used, any agreement that we received that is brand new to us. Mr. Farley said, I would rather let me, let me review it instead of having to fix it in the end step versus. So that is kind of a cap that we follow, just for sure.
You took your notes off?
I did. Okay. But anyway, and that is all the partners that will be the city clerk or something comes, anything from city council, anything from finance, anything from planning, anything from public works, Mr. Farley will review the results, watch the next, and he will offer comments and guidance. Oh, one being a lawyer as well. And another application, which is for the job this year. And also, that's the issue.
The one with the prison sewer ponds, he did a lot on that.
Yeah, that started in Montreal. Thank you. Under professional services, we have two, based on vice former city attorney, we had a lot of issues years ago and there were really people retiring and there was time that we spent probably 8500 dollars on special counsel to come in and advise the council. And we've kind of kept something in there because you never know when maybe some type of specificity or report, something we were, but Mr. Farley does just about everything in house. Anyway, we led it at 140,000 and it could come in a little lower is considered about the full of that much, but that was with all the activity. If there's real activity, that will be reflected in the real. Any questions about our attorney's office? And Mr. Farley will never tell you, but he's one of the top litigators around and he's been with us and has guided us through some pretty horrendous things. Appreciate his guidance. And it's not just Mr. Farley, it's all of his associates.
You're going to do 850, 8050, excuse me?
Yes, that is recreation.
Avenal Theater and Event Center?
Yes, Sheila is not available. I didn't publicly get her. Okay, the recreation department, this includes two, I'm sorry?
Avenal Theater and Event Center?
Wrong one, wrong one.
That's what follows unless we were jumping over.
Is, Umberto, are you on the line?
I am on the line.
Oh, okay, okay. I wasn't sure what I was going to present, but would you like to present your budget to the council?
I'm sure.
Just what page would that be on?
Is everybody?
Are you done?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Go ahead, Umberto.
Just give me a second, I need to find the.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry if the keyboard's loud. It's one of those old clunky ones from the 80s.
Okay, so for our lineups, we have our full-time employees, the typical pay rate. Over time, we, it's not something I handle. If hers contribution, if I could contribution, the main things I need to take care of are the uniform maintenance. That's just the cost for my shirts and whatnot. Unfortunately, it was cheap.
That's why?
Sorry, can you hear me still?
Yeah, now what's, what is uniform maintenance?
Oh, uniform maintenance is just for the, just for the shirts that I wear, the, the Avenal branded ones.
Okay, gotcha.
Office supplies, fortunately, because we, I was left so stocked up from last year, I was able to cut that budget from, from a thousand dollars down to 500. Most of the cost just comes from, just comes from paper and ink. So cleaning supplies as well, we were able to cut that, what, hold up. Yes, yeah, cleaning supplies as well, like, like I said, I was still stocked up, so we were able to cut that down to about a thousand dollars. Unfortunately, Costco's gotten cheaper. The main thing that we have to worry about right now is just sanitation stuff. So, you know, those Clorox wipes, the hand sanitizer, that's the only thing that, that kind of jacks up the price. Everything else has just gotten cheaper, fortunately. Our concessions, realistically, we're only, I'm only spending about $300 a month on concessions, so I was able to drop that down from 4,800 to 36. Other supplies and maintenance, that's not something we need to worry about. Professional services, let me see right here, that's where we are approved for 18,000 and for the most part, that's, most of that is taken up by Shaw's, or the Shaw's service guy who takes care of the AC for us. Our Swank movie licenses, four titles a month at a $95 a, $95 per film, that comes out to about a little over 4,500. Even though we're not showing films right now, we are in the process of working on doing outdoor films out there at the high school parking lot. The, the fees for the licenses for outdoor films is a little different though, so we're just getting that finalized and I'll be on a phone call with our sales rep tomorrow to get that all figured. Valley elevator and the, the state conveyance permit, that takes in a little bit of the professional, professional services. The fire inspection, the sprinklers, that all goes into it, pest control and ADT, ADT taking about 3,500 or 3,600 from that. Everything else, just any unexpected issues that may come up, any sort of plumbing, the neon lights, that's another thing that we needed, that I was looking into. It, we, they were looking, we, sorry, Yescow asked for about 1,200 for the last two services they, they took care of. We are missed, one of our neon lights is broken, but it is up on the, the top part of the, of the tower, so that's going to be, we're going to be looking at a little bit of an extra charge for that. Okay, for telephone, I did ask for a little bit extra, just because we are looking to upgrade to spectrum as far as the, the internet here goes, or for our telephone. Right now, AT&amp;T charges us 75 dollars a month for their everservice. We're only getting about two megabits up, 10 down. What that means is that it's kind of just good for general home use, but what we're doing right now, what we're doing, all these, we're, we're broadcasting our meetings, unfortunately just doesn't hold up to that. And the only server, or the only internet provider who would allow that for us to do that is Spectrum and, you know, we've been borrowing from the gallery for the last couple of meetings now, so at some point we have to, we do need to have our own internet set up ready for that. Okay, conference and training, pretty soon I'm going to be heading out or I'm going to be looking for, finishing on my CPR certifications as well as taking care of the, the food management. That way, that way I'm not just limited to serving pre-sold concessions here at the, during movie nights, we're able to do other things such as, you know, cooking and serving food, but I do need to be officially certified in that. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the COVID-19 situation, finding a proctor to allow me to take care of the exam, which is something I can't do online, is an unfortunately cut. The nearest one would be in Hanford, but he's been rather hard to get a hold of, so pretty soon I'll just head down to his restaurant to, to be able to actually meet with him in person if he's available. I can make an appointment with him there. Gas and electricity, we're more or less, prices more or less the same. I'm trying not to use the AC more than I need to. I only really keep it on during, during whenever there's a meeting or if we're holding films or whatever, I usually just keep them off. I can deal with the heat myself. Okay, other repairs and maintenance, that just falls into any other emergency funds there. So, so like I said, any sort of plumbing or issues that arise. Audio visual repairs, for the most part, we were able to cut down a good chunk of that from last year. So last year, sorry?
Why is that? Is it because we've already updated so much and got everything working well?
For the audio visual?
Uh huh.
Yeah, so the main cost for this was setting up the microphone system that we have right there in the little corner. That was about $9,000. However, because right now we're sort of caught, we have a cobbled up solution together where you see that they have those, those different branded lapel mics and those wired ones that we were using for meetings before. Those, those are our own equipment, both Tony and I, as well as the, the computer that we're using to broadcast all of this. We hope that we can have a, have a proper solution set up for the Pegasus stream because it's kind of, it's, it's, we can assume that we're going to be using the Pegasus stream for council meetings for the next little while, both with the, both with the COVID-19 situation, keeping everybody spaced apart and as well as when, when the social distancing guidelines ends, I'm sure that the public more or less be likely to come back into the theater themselves, sort of like what we were doing during the, during the whole landfill situation. The room will be filled and we are going to need microphones to accommodate everybody instead of just passing the same one over and over. All right. Other miscellaneous, we cut that down by a hundred dollars to 200. Of course, that just, let's hold up. Right. That is right, um, right. Sorry, I'm just looking at my little sheet right here to tell me the expenses I'm using for all of it. We are going to be adding another Google Home setup or a new, another Google Wi-Fi thing router. So it's the thing that we're using to take internet from the, from the gallery from we would just have a couple more in here at the theater. So instead of being limited to only my office and the, my office and the meeting rooms, we'd be able to have the, the network shared across the entire facility. That way there's no dead spots. All right. That's, that's it for major stuff on that. Other miscellaneous, like I said, if there's any small cleaning supplies or anything that isn't picked up or, we might be picking up a, another FM transmitter pretty soon for the outdoor films that would fall under other miscellaneous because it wouldn't be something that we'd be able to use at the theater itself. Water contact and utilities are just, it's just the usual. We've been trying to cut down on water usage here, fortunately, just because of the whole COVID-19 situation, no one's here at the theater outside of me, outside of meetings. So we're not really flushing toilets or, you know, running water as much as we need to, just enough to make sure that, you know, the pipelines stay relatively cleaned out, but it's nothing major and we're able to cut costs down that way. Our advertising budget here, it's, we're keeping it to a thousand dollars. What this mostly covers is our Adobe cost. Unfortunately, we can't share it across emails. So Anthony Fernando and I have our own separate accounts for this. This accounts for, I believe, $360 a year. Let me find that. Yes, it'd be 365 a year. Our Squarespace, our Squarespace site hosting, under advertising, that would be 144 dollars a year. That would just be for our website, which is still in development right now. We were able to find a cheaper provider than the, than Wix, who's, who was trying to charge us about 180 per, per year. There are other, this is before any promotional fees, so it could be less as far as a yearly host, yearly site hosting goes. We're not ready to present the site just yet, just because we're looking at more people to rent out the, the meeting rooms, but unfortunately, that's not something we can really take care of at the moment. Everything else would just come down to Facebook ad space. I ran an experiment with the last movie night we were able to hold. I had our, our, our movie night advertisement spread in a 30-mile radius and because of that, we were able to get, we had a lot more foot traffic than I've been used to as far as movie nights go. And the pricing is flexible depending on your region and how long you want to have the advertisement running. I want to keep about six to eight dollars, which is what we used for the last film. That would come out to about 192 dollars a year and anything left over would just be towards advertising the theater as a rental facility or as a, as an event center, so for people to rent space out for. Construction, because the, the last, last year we had $9,000 allocated for it. We were able to get rid of it this time just because that's what we were using to, to refurbish the floors. That's going to last us, hopefully, maybe it should. It's not going to last us, you know, more than a couple. Sorry. Presenting is always tough. Presenting is always tough. It's gonna last us a good another couple of years. It's not gonna be, we're not gonna have it trashed up the way it was last time. I've been good with keeping, with making sure renters come in, making sure they're lifting the, the tables off. They're not lifting tables off the ground as they're moving. Just making sure that the, the floor itself stays maintained, that way the finish isn't chipped out. We're trying to keep any sort of heavy tapes, so duct tape, we don't keep a lot on, we don't keep any duct tape on the floor. Any floor, any tape that we are using is very, the adhesive is very weak, so we just preserve the floor. So we won't need another construction budget for that, so we were able to save nine thousand dollars. And machinery and equipment, this is for any heavy, this is, we're only reserving this for the, the heavy stuff. Mainly it's just the, the disco ball that needs to get replaced. The mechanism for that is messed up. And the reason we're not looking for a thousand is because we need to bring in a lift. From what I understand, the Public Works doesn't have, has a ladder tall enough to reach up there. And getting a lift into the Pegasus room isn't easy. So after doing it, after calling up a couple of companies, just to get a few quotes, we were looking at around anywhere from seven to eight hundred dollars per, just for the machine equipment alone. But then we also be, need to be looking into the cost of the actual disco ball itself, which will make up the rest of the cost. Is there any questions?
Yes, this is Councilman Ramirez. On the line item telephone, what, what does this cover? You know, I divided that amount by twelve and it's, it's six hundred and sixty-six dollars a month. How many cell phones does this cover, or what does this cover? It seems to me a little bit.
So from what I can tell, off my knowledge, I know that this covers my cellphone bill, the, the landline bill that we have here, and U-verse. Don, would you be able to answer that one?
That is exactly it.
Okay.
So it's three things?
Yes.
Wow, that's expensive.
Well, there are multiple lines that come in.
I, I had a, you know, over at the truck stop that I managed, I had ten, ten lines. And I was paying no more than five hundred dollars for ten lines. I mean, something, something to look at, if we can decrease sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, sounds a little steep, you know, but.
And part of it is the VPN that we have, that just got finished this last year.
Okay. And I might sound like a silly question, I'm not familiar with this one. Does the theater generate any kind of revenue?
Compared to the costs that we're spending, unfortunately, no, not at the moment. That's why we're looking into advertising more of the event center side of things, rather than just relying on the revenue that we make from our movie nights from concession sales.
There's the facility when it was built, it's a six million dollar facility. And I think most of us that grew up here know kind of what it went through. And the whole idea with the new design was to be able to use the cinemas not only for movies, but for people to make presentations. You know, we have this large room, but it only accommodates so many people. People are just now getting comfortable coming into the theater and renting the theater, not knowing that it was. And that's the whole idea behind promoting it. We knew that we would never cover the cost, because it's a service to the community. And it is a very important community building. So it was definitely cut short this year, which the RIC Center and the Veterans Hall, the same thing. But unless there's some kind of huge performance, which this would not accommodate, you know, fund, generating funds is a little bit difficult. It's mostly for community events and, you know, private parties and all, but there is a cost associated with it. And it is our official council chamber, so we know that portion, that's, you know, there's no money generated for council meetings. So, but it does definitely have a place.
I do have also a question for Umberto, six ninety-two. No, it's also, you know, you, you have only spent fifty-eight dollars, just mentioned about sixty dollars this year.
All right, so, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, six ninety-two.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you there, it's a little muffled.
Yes, line six ninety-two?
Yes.
So you have only spent about fifty-eight dollars this year?
Yes, and that's just because I didn't know that, that how effective Facebook marketing would be. The fifty-eight dollars that we spent were just the cup. I ran one advertisement for the, for the event center itself, just as a rental facility. And it did bring in a couple rentals from, I believe it was the month of September, between September and November. I had maybe six rentals that came out from this little, from this short advertising period. And then I spent, then Facebook was comfortable giving us another, giving us a twenty-dollar credit. So I was able to put that towards the movie night. So that's why the, the advertising budget, or why we didn't spend very much this year on the advertising budget. But I do plan on putting more into it.
The reason I'm making this comment is because, you know, we do need revenues. You know, this is a beautiful building for the community and they actually really need to take advantage of it. But at the same time, they need, we need to get more revenue. I believe we need to start kind of reaching out to the community more and more. And Melissa mentioned it, you know, they're now coming, more rentals and now with the new ordinance about being able to have alcohol in here. Hopefully, once the COVID nineteen goes away, you know, people will start using more and more. But I do believe that we do need to do more advertising, reaching out to the community, so our revenues go up. You know, you know, it's coming to expense to the community for a hundred thousand dollars. A lot of them don't know, but this is, I believe this money was going to the community if they take advantage of it and use it more.
I'm sorry, is it still a little fuzzy there? So I'm sorry.
You know, basically, what, what he tried to say is that we should, you know, of course, I don't know what the way to go about this is. But, you know, since, since it's, we're already paying for an expense on a monthly basis of nearly ten thousand dollars, based on the numbers. Is there a way that we can put this to generate some revenue, to offset the cost?
The idea with using the one thousand dollars for that year is, I feel like the, the offset would be any, the fees for any rentals that do go in to our facility, because I operate on a flex time. Overtime isn't really taken into account for, for my personal expense, for my, for my pay. So any, so any expenses that do go into the rental just go straight into the general fund. So at minimum, people are paying anywhere from two, three hundred dollars per rental. So with five rentals in using this, I believe, I believe it could cover the costs.
Is there any, any information on, you know, the, the previous, the previous tenant of, there was somebody renting this facility before the city purchased the right?
Scott.
We're looking at a Scott or Luisa? Okay.
The city was being overtight with the stadium.
Right. Okay. I would, you know, personally, I would encourage the city to, to try to generate some revenue, because it is, it is already an expense, you know, the expense is there. There's no rent to pay, there's no mortgage to pay. However, you know, however, the cost of electricity, cell phones, all of those things are there. I think, you know, from, from my point of view, everything is already in place. The only thing would be to try to generate some revenue. Even if it's just a little bit, it would help to offset the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. That's money that can go towards, you know.
And that's the whole idea, I don't think I did, but he thought very briefly. And I know that, and this is not a excuse before we found out there was kind of a political one. Even if we didn't want to have the building, we still have the facilities to paint. But to try to promote the theater, because people have been very reluctant to talk to me. But we will, there's a book about how they're typing, you know, that can happen from where I pitched to the voters. We have done outreach to some of the organizations that's driven, or they can consider, you know, if we give them a good rate, we can just get some in. And if I, the reason I'm sensing is to ask the chief if he can sit in an office today.
You know, I think when you seriously need to sit down with the rich sons of kind of high school district, because, you know, they can use it more, and we can actually kind of break them, they can use it more. And, you know, it'd be, it'd be a lot of benefit to the community, but at the same time, it can create more revenue too. I mean, if they can use it at least once a week, different grades, or we have elementary, middle school, high school, with Dayton, we're supporting them with the swim program, I think they also show kind of.
Entirely. No, we agree, yes, they, I mean, we did this, and I know that America is as well as we can now. But I'll be very honest with you, even our community, they, they are reluctant about providing to pay anything. And I also hope that you know that we're looking at increasing, or maybe, you know, our mothers are related to moving into my home. But our community was not pleased that we're looking at that. And we have a good opportunity for life, so there are some conditions. But to try to generate that our homeless is just getting, you know, the word out, getting people interested that understand that we use some facilities, and I think for years, and I think there's kind of this, you know, we provide it and these. But they're having schools, that schools have high activity here. The dance classes are in here, and the dance class is actually a really good thing for the theater, and getting people down to the theater. That they, you know, we have injuries, we need to care, and America is learning, he's still learning. He's a very technical person, he makes the work. So I'm still very encouraged with what's going on. And I, you know, hope that this stop, stop the following, we're hoping that we can step down and. But that, that is the whole, that was the whole goal in doing this. To rebuild it and make up for the community, but our community has to understand that we can't give everything away. Because there are, you know, the adults, and the air conditioners, and people like that. We would have to use certain things humans, we did, we put proposals, just to save a film, building an area of this.
The way I see it though, you know, like, we, we are using it right now and we're, we're already paying the electricity, the AC, the everything. You know, adding another employee or two, you know, versus getting some revenue from, you know, a few movies a, a week or something like that, you know, it, it's just a recommendation.
We can't charge for the movies.
What was that?
We can't, we can't charge for the movies.
Why, why?
Once we start charging, then the film company, even though we were to accept how we're supposed to. Once they go, and we're actually charging, then you're going to charge them. We pay a certain amount for each film.
Like a commission?
So we did have a agreement years ago with the big film companies, and they changed the way we presented the evening. And we used to go with a model office, you know, first run, and then second run. But we can do the older movies and the purchase products to show them. I give them two hundred and fifty dollars, is that correct, Umberto?
I'm sorry, it's gotten really fuzzy. The only person I can hear right now is Councilman Ramirez.
Oh, that's a good one, and I'm probably not much of a mic. But there is a loss for us against the locals. And again, if you start charging, then the movie company will want to do that.
And then if we.
We make money on concessions.
In concessions, yeah, that makes sense.
No, we'll see that in the job, on the team, for revenue generation.
And then the, the issue is where if we were to lease it, we would lose our council. We would lose this portion, pretty much, right?
Right, we call it, you know, we play on a commitment, and the one thing we really wanted to reach the face of, given we use. I mean, that was certain from the council, we want to do that more long-term. But right now, this is our official council, so even though the videos can be used, we still. So basically, that's first step on that.
Of course.
Really, this, when we used to have movies here, the studios just ran us down. They kept changing the rules. And they said, we had to have sell so many tickets and we don't have that volume. And they tried, so they tried initiating the hero, was that it, where we pre-sold? And would they be, people were donating money and then they were giving them out to the students of the month and everything. And we said, see, we sold this many. And they said, yes, but they didn't come. They actually put cameras in there, and they wanted them in the seats. And if they weren't in the seats, then it didn't count. And they just kept adding and adding and adding and adding to the issues.
And then Scott was paying like seven thousand for our first run movie, for only ten, fifteen people to come in.
Yeah.
See, so he just basically went, went broke, then the city had to subsidize, so.
He didn't have a membership program, but there were only about eighty subscribers in Avalon, compared like over three hundred in Colinda. That's how he was able to stay open over there with new releases, but not over here.
We didn't settle down with the tuition.
Yeah.
So they gave you that with charity, they're coming in. You know, for our first run movie, we didn't split ten, twelve, fifteen thousand upfront. And we didn't know how much the theater was, they were guaranteed a certain amount, and that was, and didn't do well there.
Okay.
So it would leave you a whole lot of.
Yeah.
But one more comment, I do believe that the community needs to be aware, yeah. The community needs to know that, you know, they're always asking for where the money is going. And we can see a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars come to this theater. And, and that, you know, community money. But at the same time, if they participate more, come and spend time in, buy some. You know, that, you know, that will increase, you know, sustentability and help the city, and help the community to use it more. And maybe, you know, less money will come from the general fund, more money can go to others. So we have a balance. That's why it's very important for them to come and participate, come in, enjoy building the place and be part of. That way it's not a burden to the general fund. So, because no matter what I can mention, we need to maintain it, you know. Or the deals need to be paid.
This is a beautiful building, I think, we should, we should try to do something, you know, to serve the community, it's very nice.
That's nice, what are you saying?
Something, something to be mentioned, some kind of adventure.
So, any other questions? No, okay. So we want to fund fourteen thousand? Sure?
First of all, it's like, you know, that we could have one of the joint programs of recreation, but on a, and a little bit of education, and she was not available for a metro shop, and she was unable to provide some kind of budget.
So we could go to fourteen thousand?
Are you available?
Good.
Will they efficiently water treatment?
It starts on seventy.
And these are known as proprietary funds, and the enterprise fund. It's basically, they just claim the business to avoid, you know, the cost of maintenance and the dirt, or over the awful technology business. So that's kind of that, that fund, and then the free street fund. Does anyone need a break for a second, Jim? And we're getting very close to eight o'clock. So we just, they gave a very, that we could get to the bar fund. It's, it's up to you, I just want to bring your suggestion that we have decided by eight, I'm here for the duration.
I want you to go straight to them, so we can finish it.
Now, can you hear us?
Please hear now.
Ronald, you're on.
Okay, here we go. Um, so I'm starting with um, six oh one. Um, of course, uh. Payroll, PERS, BICA, all that is accounted for by Dawn. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So six oh one office supplies and computer supplies. I, I increased office supplies a little bit. More for the reason of just, you know, paper, ink, stuff like that for our printers and computers out here. See, cleaning supplies just went up a little bit to cover, as everyone has been saying for COVID. Monica has uh, been keeping everything sanitary out here, buying more supplies to keep things clean. And um, lubricants, I left the same. Uh, we've had enough from last year, so I had, didn't have to purchase any this year. But um, more than likely this year, we will have to purchase some. Um, chemicals, we're right at, right where we were last year, so I just left it the same. Um, we're, we're probably barely gonna make it, but we, we will make it. So I think next year will be the same. Drop materials, the same. Other uh, operating supplies, I left the same. Lab supplies, I decreased um, by three thousand. We didn't use very much this year because the first year we used quite a bit, so we had enough to start the budget year with plenty of um, supplies from the prior year's uh, operating budget. Equipment parts and supplies, I decreased it by five thousand. And our um, big budgeted accounts are hard to predict because we have such expensive equipment. When certain pieces of equipment go down, it, you don't know, going into it, what, what's actually gonna need to be repaired or replaced. So, you know, we, we kind of keep it in, in a range where we've been within the last few years. Sludge removal, um, we, we ha- didn't have any removed last year, but right now we have one available pond. Um, so this coming year, we are gonna have to remove uh, sludge at, at the water plant. Building repairs, I, I just left it the same. That's another one of those things. We do have a leak right now. Um, in the gutter system that's gonna need to be repaired. Um, I, it'll be something we do ourselves, so more likely it'll just be materials. Shouldn't be that costly, but the money's there for other unexpected. Repairs needed at the, at, at the buildings. Landscape materials, uh, just sometimes we need to buy, um, you know, things for, we, we do have. Weed issues and stuff like that. So we'll buy equipment for the weeds and stuff like that for the landscaping, you know, shovels or, or a hoe or rakes and stuff like that occasionally. Uh, weed eater or, or something that's needed. Let's see. Tool budget, we usually keep it around two thousand dollars, just in case uh, a certain tool is needed for a job. Uh, we don't always need certain tools, but we do have equipment that only goes down every now and then. So we, we get an occasional tool that needs to be bought for stuff like that. To, to, to repair um, certain equipment. Other maintenance supplies, left it the same. Uh, auditing is something that Dawn pulls for, I, I guess our audits. Engineering services is for Brian when we sometimes, well, like right now, we're looking at uh. Well, actually that would be wastewater. It's just uh, a contingency when we have issues with uh, the water. Any type of water issue, we call Brian. So there's funds available in case we need it, but like I said, some of this stuff is, you don't plan out. It's something that is, is there. I guess for like water line replacement, when we do stuff like that. Um, I know Fernando's been covering a lot of it. But it's there just in case he needs funds, we need funds for him to engineer. Right now, we're, we're still looking at the zero PEX unit. Brian's still gotta get together with me on that. So that, that's a, a, I know an upcoming. Project that eventually we're trying to get to. So that will cover that cost. Computer lease. Everything out there is electric, not everything. A lot of stuff we have out there is electronic. So our, our skated computers out there. I've already talked with Antonio and we're looking at replacing the hard drive in the main skater computer at the water plant. Um, I haven't got a cost estimate from him yet, but the funds are there for that replacement. Professional services, I left the same. That's for all the mainly electrical. Um, we, we call Telstart to do any um, skater programming. Our VFD malfunctions or issues with any of our VFDs. We have any issues with a, a pump. On top of the basic um, professional services as far as, you know, uh, pest control and, and those types of things is all pulled from that account. It was a bit high this year because of the zero PEX with inline energy was pulled out of that account. So next year we won't have that expenditure, so it shouldn't be. Over the budgeted amount this coming year. Um, emergency generator services is for the backup generator power. We contract, we don't contract, but we call, went out for um, biannual services or semiannual. They'll come out uh, twice a year and do the maintenance on the equipment to make sure that it's turns on when it's needed. Phone services, I left the same. Billing and postage, um, I left the same. It's one of those funds that. Looks like it hasn't been spent, but is in the process of being spent right now as we speak, so it will be used up. For the CCR to be sent out to all the customers. Conference and training is for our continuing education units. Uh, we didn't use it all this year because of the COVID, so we missed a, a training course uh, that was scheduled for April. But next year, hopefully we can uh, attend both of the, the two, the two classes that we normally attend. To, to keep our continuing education going. General notices is another one that I use for the um, CCR, which will be spent. It's in the process of, of, of being sent out. It's being printed. And um, it's, it's at the print shop now and they're working on it. Gas and electricity is same. Machinery repair and maintenance, I left, I actually dropped it a little bit. Like I said, it's one of those accounts that we normally just stick within a range and last year we were above what I'm budgeting, I mean. Yeah, twenty eighteen, nineteen, we, we used more than we, what I'm budgeting this year, but this year we used less. So it's kind of one of those things that depending on how things go. We might need it. Uh, pump rebuild, I, I try to um. Schedule for two pumps, not knowing how many will need to be rebuilt every year, but um, normally we do about two pumps a year. And they usually cost anywhere from twelve to fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars for a rebuild. I have one in the shop now that hopefully is done by the end of the year, which will be pulled out of this account. And you know, I, it should be around the fifteen thousand dollar range. So that's the reason for, for that budgeted amount. Other repair and maintenance, we use for. Any equipment that we need to purchase. I mean, it, there, there's a lot of uh, unusual stuff at the water plant that's not like specifically line item in these. So we use it out of the other repair and maintenance. Filter rebuild. Is used to purchase anthracite to add to the, to the filter me, add for the filter media. We, we use it for specific things. This year's budget um, is not showing, but it's all been spent and then some. So I just left it the same for next year because we are gonna do probably another rebuild, complete rebuild of a filter next year. Rental leases and equipment, left it the same. Machinery equipment rental, left the same. Books and subscriptions, memberships. Um, the one big item that we did increase was our water contract with utilities. And I got notice from Dawn that our cost for water out of the aqueducts um, just about doubled. So by what we used um, was gonna cost, by the amount we were allotted. Would cost us about ninety thousand dollars extra this year for water to purchase. Um, so I increased the budget ninety thousand on that line item. And then I believe the other one was our regulatory, which is just the state, what they charge us to monitor what we do. But that's the regulator costs. Testing services, I dropped. I had increased it last year because we had a new testing for UCMR four that had came out. And we also had switched uh. Uh, laboratories, but it, it's been much cheaper. We had a, a negotiated rate and where they dropped all of our, our routine samples that we grab weekly. So we've saved lots of money. So I, I dropped that twenty thousand dollars from last year's budgeted amount. And that's about all of ours that I, that I control.
Just, hopefully this is on, just to give you an idea, when we say the cost of water. Water's just a small component of the cost of water. We're paying for maintenance and operations. We're paying Trinity. We are paying um, the delta, the impacts to the delta, because our water goes to the delta. We pay for pumping. We pay for capital costs. So it's not, the, actually the wa- the cost of water is minimal compared to all the other costs. So I believe it was for San Luis uh, maintenance and operations, they doubled the amount. We had no idea. She received the information and it really took us by surprise. So that is the increase. And one other area, if it's okay, Ronald, I'd like to explain. And I think it's, it's probably pretty apparent, but our gas and electricity, with all the motors and all the equipment that it takes to treat water. Our water has to be shipped up over about eleven hundred feet. And then yes, it's gravity fed, but it takes a lot to get it there because it's. It's eight miles of transmission line for both lines. So um, it's just a cost of doing business. And we have to do a little climate in the, in the meantime. Thanks, Ronald. Any questions?
Any questions for Ronald?
Just one thing to note, if you look at the second page, um, where it looks like we have a zero bond principal cost. It's just a, a formatting issue. Those lines below it should actually be moved up one line. And I'll get that corrected. It's already on my list of things to do.
Because the water plant is part of our bond commitment. That's why we, um, it would be difficult for us to seek a loan on our water. To, to, you know, pick up any kind of capital improvements through loans and all. So that was a decision made many years ago. And water fund pays a portion of that, capital and, and interest.
It is about eight o'clock.
Do we want to get through water distribution and then we can call it a night? We still have to do wastewater too. It, it's up to council if you'd like to.
Page seventy eight, seventy nine.
Um, Ronald is fifteen, fifteen one. It's the long one.
But we, we need to get through, uh, we have water treatment, then we need water distribution. And that would be. Okay.
Fifteen one hundred, which is seventy eight.
Right, but Rod is water distribution, which is the other part of the water fund is fifteen. Yes. Rob? Are you on the line? Still on the line?
Yes, I'm still here.
Hey, Rob.
Yes.
Why did we jump down there?
Hello?
Yes, Rob, uh, we're, shall we uh, down to water distribution, fund fourteen?
Okay. I'm trying to find it here.
Where am I, Rob?
Everybody's coming in, all static key. Scott still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
You wanna go ahead and take water? My phone's getting all static. Yeah, I can't even understand what nobody's saying.
All right, no problem, Rob. So we're, basically we're starting at uh, at uniform maintenance five seventeen under fourteen thousand. Or fourteen, fourteen thousand one hundred. Um, we did drop the uniforms by five hundred dollars.
Scott, what fund are you reviewing?
He's in fourteen.
We're in fourteen, fourteen one hundred.
Fourteen one hundred.
Five seventeen.
Well, that's line.
My line says five seventeen.
Right, the. Five oh one to five sixteen will be the employee cost that Dawn provides.
Yeah, that's all Dawn's, Dawn's providing all the, down to five sixteen. Thank you, Melissa. So we did drop the uniforms by five hundred dollars, um, just because we're coming in a little bit lower this year. Our, our equipment parts, we did drop by ten thousand dollars. That still is a contingency when we have a water leak. Um, any of the pipe that we buy, you know, our welding supplies or things like that still have to come out of that. So. I got a wooden table I'm knocking on because we haven't had a ton of water leaks yet this year. But we're, we're, we did drop that by, by ten thousand dollars. The street maintenance materials, we left blank because we can get rid of that. Um, we can actually use our, our street funding. Um, and, and we put that in water, water distribution because when we dig up the street. To fix a water line, then we actually would have money in there for materials to patch the street back. Um, so we've gotten rid of that. Our tools, we did drop by a thousand dollars. Um, we, we always find when we're on these water leaks, we, we actually wear grinders out. Um, we wear all the, the brushes and everything that we use with that. So we, we've kept that. We're constantly needing tools. I know we haven't spent any this year, but we're gonna keep that twenty five hundred in there. Um, the other, the other maintenance supplies, we've dropped down by two thousand dollars. Auditing, obviously that's with Dawn. Our engineering services, we've kept the same because of uh. Being able to use Brian for anything that we need on, on that. Our professional services is when we have a water leak and we have to call in. Uh, we, we use Mike Wilson quite a bit. He also has subcontractors that works through his licensing. And uh, like the leak that we had below tank three on this side of the hill, uh, we used him. Quite a bit with that one and, and another. Quite a bit with that one and and another operator that he brought in through his business license. Telephones, we don't worry about with water distribution or training. That that has stayed the same because as Ronald was saying, we need to keep our certificates. We all have distribution certificates. Gas and electricity. Has gone down a little bit, but we we still are maintaining all of the. Repair, we're maintaining the same. Um, that's with. Like the backhoe, there's some stuff that we can, even though eighteen thousand covers a lot of the equipment maintenance, if we have any extra. That happens on a job with our backhoe or our loader, we can take care of that. We we pay our uh. Distribution certificates out of memberships. The other miscellaneous is is things that we can use for if we don't have enough in memberships. We can we can draw from that and transfer it back up if we need to. And then the machinery and equipment is if we need to buy new equipment. So. And then the operational transfers and equipment transfers are. I think that's a Dawn thing. So. Are there any questions on this? Did everybody hear?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, okay.
Uh, on on this, the very, very last line, his is um where it says total expenditures, water distribution fund. I know that it doesn't add up to three point two million this way. Can you just explain that one just from my understanding?
That is, that's the sum of fourteen, fourteen, one hundred and fourteen, fourteen thousand.
It's the treatment and then the distribution. It's not cheap to make water, ship it over the hill, that's for sure.
Yeah, so public works, public works portion of that is eight hundred and ten thousand. And the other portion of that is Ronald's portion in treating the water. He's got all the big electric bills. And all the chemical bills and all that kind of stuff, so.
And you'll see that in sewer also. There's a split.
Continue and finish wastewater. We'll have, it'll be um collection and treatment. And that would be the only thing left would be treated, but we can certainly continue this next time. You want to go ahead with wastewater since we haven't booked on the line?
Is that fifteen one hundred?
It's fifteen, uh, fifteen, fifteen thousand and fifteen.
It should take too much longer.
Are we in agreement? We'll we'll finish at least water or wastewater? Okay, Scott or Rob? I guess Rob's phone's not doing well. Scott, would you like to uh review waters? Uh, excuse me, wastewater collection? Okay, thank you.
Waste wastewater collection, yes, fifteen thousand, fifteen, fifteen thousand. Back down to the uniforms. Uh, we we kept that the same. It's allocated by the employees. I'm sorry.
We were just getting the page number. Scott, go ahead.
Oh, I I'm sorry. I I'm kinda like Rob. I had the uh just the layout of all of our departments. I didn't have the the full.
You got it.
Go ahead, Scott, we're ready.
Okay, so so our uniforms is maintained the same. Um, employees are are uh. They they take that money out differently from water distribution to wastewater. Or it's just the way they kind of break it up to make sure all the uniform stuff is paid for. We were able to drop it in water distribution, but we had to maintain it in in wastewater collection. We were able to drop our other operating supplies by. Two thousand dollars. Uh, there again, we don't know when. We're gonna need to have extra sewer pipe if we have a fractured area where it collapses or something. But. We we do quite a bit of of sewer maintenance, manholes that need repaired, things like that. Our equipment parts, the jet rotters and mainly the jet rotters. That's where that money, and I know it doesn't show that we've spent a lot, but we we have worked on our jet rotor and our. And our VAC trailer quite a bit uh in the last couple of months. So that that line item is probably gonna. Look different as to what we've used this year. The building repair, we did drop by five hundred. Our street maintenance materials, we we dropped by, what's that, thirteen, thirteen hundred? We do still keep some street maintenance materials in the in our wastewater collection because generally. If we have to dig up for the sewer, it it is a a bigger hole. And so we did keep some of the street maintenance in there. The tools, we've kept the same and a lot of that with tools is included in buying different uh or or new. Uh tips for our jet rotor and things like that to be able to. Do our sewer cleaning. The other maintenance supplies, we've dropped by fifteen hundred. We keep that in. I mean, that's that's one of those like Melissa explained earlier, if something else in the line item didn't quite fit in with what we need to buy. The other maintenance supplies covers that. The auditing done, engineering services, we still uh maintain that with with Brian. We haven't had to use him a lot this year on our sewer dis- uh collection system. But we did have the uh survey on all of our sewer lines about two years ago. And we do have a lot of maintenance and repair that we're gonna have to do on these. And so we're gonna be needing Brian on that. Our professional services, we hadn't used a lot, so we did drop it by five thousand. The machinery repair and maintenance, we're just maintaining the same price. Other repair and maintenance, we're continuing to keep a thousand dollars. We really don't uh rent or lease anything for wastewater collection. Uh, construction, we dropped down to fifteen thousand. There again, we don't know when we're gonna have to go in and have a line repaired. We do have a lot of lines in the city out of all the miles of of uh wastewater collection. Sewer lines that we have here. It was quite a surprise on. The survey that we did with our system as to how many things that actually. Really, really needs some some attention and repair. So. This year, that may be, that may be more than enough and next year, it may be not half as much as what we're gonna need. So. That's just, we we'd like to have that in there for that. And then our equipment and operational transfers, there again, that's a lot with Dawn. And are there any questions on? Our wastewater collection?
No. None so far, Scott?
Guys, thank you all very much.
We go on to fifteen one hundred?
Everybody ready? Uh, get started?
Yes, Ronald.
Okay, um, so we'll start at six oh one, um, which is just office supplies. Um, I increased it a hundred fifty dollars because we were close to. Uh, actually, we probably did go over because we just placed an order for a few um. Items. So uh just going off of last year's, I I increased it a little bit. Which probably some of it could come out of computer supplies of what I just ordered this year. I mean, this last order, I'm sorry. Cleaning supplies, we left it the same. Lubricants, I left it the same, same kind of deal with that as as the water plant. Um, we had leftovers from. Last year that we used all all this year. We didn't have to purchase anything um under chemicals. We started using a new chemical to help. With the um biological process for the. The bugs that we that are in in the system. Um, we we found a new. A new chemical that helps us dissolve the fats and greases, takes away the foam, foaming problem we'd had on our on our clarifiers. So I I increased the budget there from two thousand to six thousand to purchase those um. Uh, chemicals, uh. Stop materials, left it the same. I I decreased equipment parts. Last year, we purchased, uh, which it's not showing here uh yet, uh, a couple of um flow meters. That are still waiting for them to come in, so they haven't been charged yet. But um that was the reason for the amount being so high last year. So I decreased it back to ten thousand this year. Sludge removal, I I decreased because we did have a lot removed this this year. Next year, we will still need to have about the same amount removed. Building repairs, I left the same. Uh, site maintenance, um, Scott usually or Rob usually pulls this money to purchase. The roundup and the weed killer for the areas out here because we have a lot of uh open area. And um so they they purchased the the chemical supplies to uh. Maintain the the grounds out here is a for weed control. Uh, let's see what else. Tools, left it the same there. Other maintenance supplies, I decreased a couple of thousand dollars. Auditing services stayed the same. Engineering services, I left the same, knowing that we're gonna have to work with Brian this year on the. Uh, potential of putting a holding pond on the wastewater grounds. So. There there's money available for for me meeting with Brian for that. Uh, computer lease and enhancement, kind of the same thing, our SCADA computer out here. I talked with Antonio about replacing the um. Upgrading the hard drive and, you know, getting more memory on the computer. The the one we have out here is is old. I at one point wanted to replace it, but Antonio thinks just uh upgrading the hard drive. And putting in uh memory would would uh be sufficient. Professional services is is mostly a Telstar thing where we have them come out. They do our flow meter calibrations, uh any issues with SCADA. Any any issues with our VFDs or electrical that we're not uh able to fix, they they take care of for us. Same out here, we have a a backup generator. Um, so they do, we use budget money for. Semi-annual maintenance. Phone services, I increased the to cover the amount. Let's see, building and postage, uh I left it at a hundred. I'm not sure why there's, it wasn't over this year. I have to look into that. Conference and training, I did the same, being as with water plant, uh we didn't get to attend all the. The functions this year, so hopefully next year we get, we'll get back on that. Uh, gas and electricity actually went down.
Ronald? Ronald, that's Dawn and I. Uh, we decreased it by twenty-six percent and the reason why is that the solar plant. Or the solar system should be operational. They say by December, but we're probably looking at February. But we're counting on there being a cost savings for that. So just want that. Dawn and I did it, sorry. But we are counting on that and the project is actually ready to go. We need those things. We need those solar panels. Otherwise, then we'll figure the other out. Sorry, Ronald.
Yeah, that raise in a submarine.
Yeah, I'm still here. Other than that one, there there was no really, no other big changes. Um, I I think everything else was was pretty much the same. Can you guys still hear me?
We thought maybe you passed out or something.
No, I'm here. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, but besides those, I I I didn't make any other major changes. They they all stayed about the same. Do we have any any questions on on anything?
Questions? No questions, Ronald?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ronald.
Very good.
Actually, one of the. Actually, a few simple documents to follow. Okay, but it's found a lot of transitions between the. It's much more uh readable than. But if you have questions, we can answer them next time.
I just went like. Uh, we need to set up another date or to finish this.
No, the next one's shorter.
Much shorter.
Probably often certainly less if you're like red streets, like in Los Angeles, simple street line, very simple. And it would be uh grant debt service, project, project funding.
RDA. RDA and the um. Yeah.
So we can allocate two hours?
I think two hours would do it, please. We can really go to uh see what we've done.
All right, so need to pick a day.
On Friday.
Day, any day. Guess Kevin's done with them.
Oh. Monday, Monday or no? Just throwing that out there just for today.
It is my day.
It is because I have.
We can have a party.
There you go. First liches.
On the fifteenth? That's my cousin's birthday.
Fifteen? Five to seven.
So that's Monday, fifteenth?
Oh, oh, well, we saw PIB revenues, but. The money we have is what we have.
That's throwing a dart at the wall. Why do we have that door open? Why are we got the door open and we're running the air conditioning?
Is Rusty still there?
Internet.
Yes, my laptop.
Oh, yeah, because he's running it to the galaxy. I guess that's a good reason.
Is Rusty still on?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we're good. The the Rob, Scott, and Umberto, our next meeting, our workshop will be on Monday, the fifteenth. From five to seven and we'll be reviewing recycling, refuse, street. And we'll be reviewing recycling, refuse, streets. And then we'll get into our debt service and projects, grants. And we'll also be going over revenues.
Okay.
We're good?
All right. It's been fun, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not as much fun as it's been here.
You guys can sit and do all sorts of things. We can't.
What's for dinner?
You missed sandwiches.
Haven't had this much fun since the old hog ate my little brother.
At least it wasn't a big hog.
No, just an old hog.
What? This is this is one of these months where we started on a Thursday and so the second one's going to be Thursday? Is this the first one? This is the first one in June. Okay. Okay.
I'm still on. You're making me very jealous of those sandwiches.
Okay.